Good evening. I call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission special meeting for this Wednesday, June 25th, 2025. Here we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Lynn?
Here.
Commissioner Donahue?
Here.
Commissioner Simpson?
Here.
Commissioner Peterson's here. Commissioner Sharp? Chairperson Carmichael?
And here. We have a quorum. Do you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice.
And everybody else who's going to testify, please raise your right hand and testify and swear that any and all testimony you give tonight will be the complete truth. Thank you. Two reminders. One, silence all your phones and electronic devices, and anyone for the public who comes will need to sign in for their public testimony with their name and contact information. The review of the public hearing procedures will be a little different like it was for the last special meeting in that the applicant as such is the village itself. So Scott Williams, our village planner, will make the presentation, followed by commissioner discussion and comments. And at the end of the, all of our discussions for the various articles, then the public may weigh in. After that, you're not going to have public comments throughout after each article discussion. Is that clear? Okay, under old business, we have a public hearing, PCC 001, 2025, requests from the Village of Westmont regarding zoning ordinance text amendments as follows. A zoning ordinance text amendments to repeal Appendix A zoning of the Westmont Code of Ordinances and to establish a new Chapter 95 zoning of the Westmont Code of Ordinances. Comprehensive updates to the entire zoning ordinance, including amendments to the zoning districts, development standards, planning processes, and other zoning regulations.
Do you need approval of the minutes?
Okay. Did I miss?
Yeah.
Thank you. And before we proceed further, I would like a motion to approve the minutes of the June 11th, 2025 regular meeting.
Motion Simpson?
Motion Simpson.
Second.
Second Sharp. Discussion of the minutes. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Donahue?
Staying.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
And Chairperson Carmichael?
Yes. Thank you. I think I skipped that last time, too. Quick review under these seventeen articles that we have for discussion under the draft ordinance. The first four we covered were covering the districts. The next three were various uses such as accessory and temporary uses. And the third section we're going to get into tonight is generally applicable regulations, starting with Article Nine, parking. And so Senior Planner Williams, would you take over?
Yes, Chair. I can give a quick update. First, I just want to say the goal for tonight's meeting is to get through the rest of the commissioner comments, and then if anybody's in the public, we'll open it back up. And then a continuation of the meeting to, I believe it's going to be July 23rd, and hopefully to have revisions then, and then have a final vote. So just to lay out the continual process with this. But as the chair said, we're starting with Article Nine, which is parking regulations. So I'm going to go through just the general updates that we're making to this section. So for the applicability for tonight, we have updated the parking minimums for most of those uses that are currently listed in the code. We have reduced the parking requirements for multi-unit and multi-unit residential properties. We had additional reductions allowed based on environmental context, including the villages' downtown, multi-tenant centers, and other minimal impact uses. Those are your exemptions. We integrated the parking lot design standards from the engineering specification sheets. We, in doing so, we took what was the minimum requirement for parking stall size. That was ten by twenty feet, and reduced it to nine by eighteen feet as the minimum. We introduced stacking requirements for drive-through establishments, and we included minimum landscaping, island, and design standards for parking lots. One thing I will add before we get into a lot of the specifics, staff is looking at in the, in Section 9.02, which is the minimum parking requirements, we are looking at reexamining some of those numbers, likely to be less, not hinging directly on employee count and more on overall space for some of those uses like warehousing, manufacturing industry. And then we're also reexamining just the overall calculation method compared to other surrounding communities. So you'll likely see some significant revisions to that section coming in July. But we certainly will take comments on that section as well.
I don't understand in that section how you have like fractions, like 0.5 and 2.5. So is that you add them up and then round it off?
Correct. Yeah. So what is, is when there's a point five, and I believe it's listed, the exact calculation method is at the start, I believe. But basically, we round up. You can't have a half space or a quarter space. So we round up to the nearest whole number.
Once you go with the use or the employees, then you...
Yeah. So the use, once we know the use, we look at whatever that calculation method is. So it could be area or employees right now in the code. And then we calculate it based off that, and then you get the overall amount.
That's what I thought. I know there's something in here that tells you you round up or down, but it just looks odd in here.
Scott, sorry. Is it, did you, did you just say, say for warehouse and manufacturing and things that you were, you were not going to do it based on per employee, but rather per square foot?
Yeah. Right now, that's the thought. That's how some of the surrounding communities calculate their, those type of uses.
For warehouse and manufacturing, I can imagine there's lots of square feet where there might only be a very small office on it. So in a way, I can almost understand why it might be per employee because it might, like, every warehouse is different about how much is not, not really occupied or how many people.
Yeah. So the, the thought with employees at least, it's very difficult to get an accurate employee count. I mean, we've had, you know, specialties come up. They're like, well, maybe have two to 10 employees. We don't know.
I know. I, I, I can understand.
So it's to try to have a more definite number when needed to provide to them.
Is it square footage of, say, because a lot of times in a warehouse, there'll be like storage, storage square feet, and then there might be like a small office corner to it. Is there, is there square footage of, say, the whole warehouse, or is it the square footage of just the office aspect?
We would, we would look at doing, you would take, similar to how we calculate floor area, we'd look at exempting some of those spaces for, yeah, that's what we're looking at right now at the staff level. But we haven't come up with exact amounts yet.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I agree with that, um, as to do a square footage maybe, but just on like whatever is going to be the occupiable. I don't want, I don't, not that they're living there, but occupied type of proportion of the building.
So, so I'm gonna, I'm sorry, Scott.
That's fine.
I'm going to chime in, just not only to incite some discussion, but so everyone understands where do these numbers come into play when we do stuff. So obviously, when someone is proposing to build a brand-new building or move into a building, we always look at the calculation methods based on the use that is coming before us. But buildings have a much longer life often than the business. So it's very hard, even if it's like a warehouse where the first user says, we only have three employees, and so it's very difficult to design code for that. And so if our code said, I'm sorry, we say you need 20 spaces, you're telling us three employees, well, that's prime for a variance request. The intent is not to eliminate all requests for variances. Sometimes those are warranted. But we're trying to give the building longevity over the life of the building, which means that although we design it for that first use, if that use ever goes away, any of the uses that are allowed in that district could go in there. If it's not a special use, which means a permitted use, it means they can go in there kind of indiscriminately. Although, we do have a trigger to say if it is a very different use than was there before, we can re-scrutinize the parking. If it's a special use, then they would come before this commission and the board, and then the parking could be scrutinized through the special use process. So if a new business was moving in there. It is not always easy to come up with one measurement method that fits everybody. So I'm going to use two quick examples. The shopping center market center down at 63rd and Cass. So we're very proud of that redevelopment that happened there. Although, there is probably some excessive parking that's in front of those buildings. Well, not only did not everything get built the way it was supposed to, but we designed it for a movie theater. So the first user we thought was going to go there was a movie theater. So obviously, a movie theater has fairly high parking requirements. That's why you see a lot of parking there. The office market, you know, has changed. I believe we had someone at one of our previous meetings that came in and said, look, I took aerials to show how empty the parking lot is. I think we heard at the last meeting, the office user said, well, we're obligated to still provide like 100 spaces to the lessee that's there because they're not sure what's going to happen with the office market. So if we reduce those down too far, what happens when everyone has to go back to work or work in the office? The other example I want to give where variance was requested and granted, and it doesn't always work out, the shopping center that's on Ogden Avenue that has Orange Theory and Potbelly, and a very successful restaurant on the weekends, that very successful restaurant has overflow onto the residential streets. So that's one where it's like, well, the planning and zoning and board allowed lesser parking than our codes required because parking is a constraint of how much land area there is. It's a constraint of how expensive it is. Because I think, you know, a parking space that's in a parking lot, you know, is like $20,000 to build that. And if you're doing it in a parking garage, it's like $100,000 per space when a builder is building this stuff. My numbers might be off, but it's the numbers we always used to use. So what staff is doing between this meeting and where we propose revisions is kind of making sure that the numbers that our consultant put together for us, which was based on other communities and tried to be in line with other communities, to see if there's anything we can refine, particularly when it's based on number of employees, because that's hard to grasp. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but those are the points where we look at the parking.
So a warehouse proposal, and they say, well, you know, the trend is toward robotics and fewer, fewer employees. So they could still come in and request a variance or special use for less parking?
Yes. What, what this does is it generates a number when Scott is working with someone that says they want to do something, that Scott says, well, it says, you're like, based on your use, you need X number of spaces. Is the space you're looking to build, does it have that minimum amount? They could always come in and have the reverse and say, well, you're only requiring 20, but we need 60 because we have lots of employees in a small amount of area. We want to provide what's needed for us. We just don't want the situation where they say, well, we only need three because we're mostly storage or mostly warehousing, and then only three get built, which means there's really only land area for three, and then that user goes away, and then suddenly you have an unusable building because there's not enough parking. And a lot of the vacancies we have in town are because usually the parking does not support any of the uses there because over time, there was just not enough parking.
So the first part of what you said, it sounds like the way you first approached, I just want to make sure it's in my head straight. You guys approach a project based on its original use. Let's say it's a warehouse. You would do a parking per thousand square feet, but then later it becomes a classroom facility or training facility with a, with a whole different kind of use. In that case, they would almost certainly have to come for a variance or otherwise add parking. And that would be the process for switching those uses to a higher density use?
Correct. When the use is vastly different than the use that came before it, that's a trigger. So even on the older existing buildings, we had, where if you remember, where played again sports was up on Ogden Avenue. There's not much parking at that building. Played again and sports left. We would have let another retailer move in there without scrutiny to their parking because it was a, it was a retail user that was there before. But we had restaurants looking at that space. And we said, well, there's not enough parking on that site for restaurants. So if you want to put a restaurant there, you would have to get a variance. And then the restaurant would have to justify why they need so few spaces because the land area there doesn't lend itself to anymore. So it's kind of like that dynamic difference where we have that trigger. And then if it is a dynamic difference and it's a special use, then obviously through the special use process, we can scrutinize a lot of the traffic and parking and circulation. So, yes.
The, the second way is enlargement of the structure or building itself. We also then can look at parking again. So if they're expanding the use.
Okay.
I will also note, we are changing a bit of the language on that particular section related to change of use. So I believe right now, it's just, if you're not meeting the minimum required, you have to request a variance. We're implementing language that's, if you're within 20% of what the requirement is onsite, we can allow the use without them coming in for a variance. So we're giving them some space to maneuver when it's, you know, a few parking spaces that we don't think are necessarily needed for the use in particular.
That would be up to the discretion of the...
Zoning.
I think in here for the health and fitness centers, it's 2.5 per thousand square feet. I think, I don't know, anyone who goes by Orange Theory or their place, I think that should be, there should be, I don't know, higher, there's, I don't think there's enough parking whenever there's health clubs that come in town. I mean, Orange Theory up there, granted, they have the, you know, the sandwich, but I mean, that's always packed. The place on Ogden, the place on 63rd, I think that maybe should, more parking should be required for those types. I don't know if anyone else ever notices that.
They're very dense. And even like the Planet Fit, yeah, Planet Fitness, thinking of other bigger, larger gyms, LA Fitness, that's 63rd.
Yeah.
I think there's more than three, or 2.5 people per thousand in those facilities.
Yeah, we can certainly look at...
And maybe, yeah, check with other towns because I, it's very frustrating.
Yeah, those are, some of them are like the bigger ones, like the LA Fitnesses and the ones that aren't class-oriented. It's a little bit easier to use a space ratio. Some of the classes-driven ones, like the Orange Theory is, you have a lot all at once, and then later in the day, there's nobody. So...
But when you have the all-out ones, it, especially if they're in a strip center where there's other businesses, it's, it's not fair that they get to take up the whole parking lot and you go there for lunch, and there's nowhere to park.
Yeah, we'll take a look at neighboring communities and see.
Okay.
There was also a public comment about the parking ratio for veterinary clinic. It seemed odd to, that it was more stringent than that of a parking ratio for service or goods retail.
Is, is there any verbiage in, Jill, your example where, say, you have a gym that has a class, and they're overpopulated during, you know, maybe they have classes at 7:00, 8:00, 9:00 a.m., and they're overpopulated and potentially spilling into other businesses' parking spots? Is there any, let me try to articulate this correctly. It's not illegal for a patron of one business to park in another business's assigned slot. It is.
Exactly. You're right.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's got some, like, I, I just, Westmont's a small town. There's small businesses that might only have X amount of parking spots to use if they have, you know, they have a right to attract customers to come into that business. So if they have three spots, but they get 10 people that come to a class, are those people allowed to park in another, you know, business's, you know, spot in that, you know, in that subdivision or in that, you know, communal lot, if you will, without penalty? And if it's not applicable to this conversation, so if not, I apologize, but...
No, they are allowed to park anywhere in the lot. But what that does, it's unfair, I think, to the other businesses. If someone comes and they're not going to the class, and they want to get a sandwich or get a taco, there's nowhere to park. So you just don't go there.
Yeah.
I think unfortunately, in those type of scenarios, it is largely up to the property owner to make sure their tenants are going to have enough parking in a lot of times. Otherwise, the tenant will leave and find a new location if they can't have enough parking. Those are the multi-tenant centers. A lot of the ones we see in town are older. We have exemptions in place because they have so many users that switch in and out pretty constantly. So we do have exemptions in place for them to have basically what the parking they have is what they have. And they don't need to come in for any variances. But for new buildings, we try to look at what the maximum would be at any given time because that could have the potential of having basically the overflow into the neighborhoods and whatnot.
Well, I'd feel better if you just kind of compare, and if we're in line with everybody else, well...
Scott, can I ask a question? Because I don't, I don't know the answer to it. So I'm not smart.
We'll see if I'm smart.
A new retail strip mall. How would we calculate the parking if we don't know the users?
I believe it's off the building square footage.
But which, would we use just a high retail number, like the one per, one per 200? Is that the high retail number or? Because Commissioner Peterson, I say, I believe what's one of the difficult things is when you have a fitness user going into a strip mall, because obviously, you can't design the strip mall for the highest, most intensive parking. You tend to take what is a normal, which is hard to measure. So I just, so I don't put Scott on the, on the spot. I think we probably should look at that, Scott.
Yeah, I, I think what we currently use is, what, in the past, would be used is, we'd have to know each use or potential use that would go in. I think what we need to put in is based off the square footage of the building, and we use for expansion of multi-tenant centers, 250 square feet.
Yeah. And that's where I, that's where I was thinking I was getting the 250 square feet would be.
It's just not explicit. It's implied. But yeah, we'll note to integrate it in.
Under the video gaming, there were, there's also been public criticism that 10 per 1,000 feet is excessive, an excessive requirement.
Maybe. There's, there's restaurants and there's video gaming cafes. The thing is that video gaming cafes are no longer allowed in the village, so there will be no new ones. The only ones that are allowed are the ones that are already there. So formally, there would be no requests unless the board decided to reopen up video gaming cafe licenses.
Yeah, and if, if it was a restaurant.
I think the use would need added back into the zoning ordinance first, so we could address that parking at that time.
And if it's accessory to a restaurant or something else, we would just view it as a restaurant entirely.
And the restaurant has the same, same qualifier. So it's 10 per thousand. So my understanding now is we're doing it, you have to, we're allowing video gaming as accessory use, right?
Currently, it is allow, and it depends on the district.
Sure.
So for example, in our downtown, no new accessory video gaming uses are permitted. But like in the B2, in the C1, I, I know at least in the B2, I don't know off the top of my head.
No, I think you're right, C1, too.
That can be requested as part of a serving liquor license, which is certain types of liquor licenses, which are typically with restaurants.
Well, and that's kind of what I'm following, is that the requirement, as I understand interstate law, to have the video gaming, you have to have a liquor license. And most of the time, it seems like it mirrors exactly what we would do here, except the bar is 33 per seat, and then everything else kind of matches up, right? So restaurant is 10 per, well, craft alcohol is 10 per thousand. And then it says one per employee. So I just wanted to draw that because why did, I guess, why for the craft beer did we add one per employee, but then we don't have it for anything else? So I'm wondering, do we just strike the one per employee if we don't feel it's needed for the rest of it? Just to keep it consistent? It seems a little silly if like a craft beer, like an altar maybe or something? I'm trying to think of who that would apply, maybe opening up here that we...
Yeah, I, I think we would look at axing that. That might have been a carryover as well.
Sure.
There was a lot of text amendments during that time for the craft brewer, at a time for the craft brewers and, what's a, what's a brew pub versus a craft brewer versus a distiller?
Yes, they have different employees each sampling their crafts. I follow that. And then the other one is, going back to the gym, gym talk, this was a while back, back when I was on the other side here, where maybe, I know some other towns, they draw a distinction between a fitness studio and a fitness gymnasium, and it's usually strictly done based on a square footage basis. The idea of a really large gym, you have machines spread out. You don't want people packed. Studio, you have that higher density. Classes are at nine. Twelve people are packing that room. Everyone's coming at nine, and then they're gone. Maybe that's, maybe we should add language to differentiate that.
That's...
And then we can increase the studio parking limit and then keep the gymnasium at the lower amount. And again, if they, if they want the variance, they can come in. But I would imagine we'd want to see a parking study showing, hey, during peak hours, this isn't going to be a problem. And I think that would actually address kind of what Commissioner Peterson was getting to. Because what Joe said, the initial building is kind of the unknown, right? We don't know when they're coming in. But after a while, the market will kind of take care of itself. Because if there's a vacancy, and I'm the business owner wanting to put an Orange Theory or a Pure Bar, if there's no parking, I'm not going to rent that space simply because there's no parking already available. The concern is, if that person did rent it, now they're stealing everyone else's parking, usually the market will correct itself, and people then aren't going to be renewing their leases. Usually when, you know, if you imagine over there on Ogden, that strip mall, right by 83, if you added another studio, I think you'd probably have a few tenants not renewing based on that parking consumption. Just my thoughts on that.
Yeah, I believe the surrounding towns, that is how they divide it out. They have studios versus fitness gyms.
Yeah, good idea.
And so, I'm sorry, Commissioner Simpson, I was about to say John, talked about how the industry will correct itself. So unfortunately, the gentleman's not here tonight, but you heard him a couple of times talk about parking when he would come up and speak. And I believe in the written comments, you saw it as well. And one of the things that he had brought up was maybe you don't need minimums. So there is a trend, it's an emerging trend, that the communities that are larger... So there is a trend, it's an emerging trend, that the communities that are larger are in some respects allowing some of the business to dictate what they think they need. That can work in a situation like downtown Chicago, where you have other parking options. You know, usually you can find something on the street, usually you can, you know, pay in someone else's garage. When I go down to the theater, you know, I could, I have a multiple, you know, I have multiple places to pick where I want to park. When I was working in Hawaii, in Waikiki, they removed all parking minimums. Because they said the hotels are not going to undersize their parking spaces based on what they know when you fly in there, how many people are going to rent a car and need to park it. If you live down there and have a condo, they know, they're not going to build a condo that has no parking because they won't be able to sell the units. So there, it works because there are other alternatives. We are not moving in that direction, even though it was brought to us. Because other than our downtown, there's not a lot of places to park on the street, especially overnight. You know, there's, there's not the ability to park in someone else's parking lot when they don't want you to park there. You know, for the most part, everyone has their own parking lot and they don't share it. Which is a discussion all on its own. But I, since he's not here and since you did see that in the comments, that, that can be a good idea based on where you are and how dense it is and how many other parking options there are. Letting the industry dictate what they feel is needed. But staff didn't feel, and our consultant didn't feel, that was a good fit for Westmont.
Can I ask a question? What, for a lot of these medical office buildings, what would that, what use be classified in this? That be either commercial or institutional?
I believe their label is offices. So medical office under offices. I think that one's 3.33.
Okay.
What it is.
I was, I was searching for that to compare it to veterinary. Because I feel like they're very similar uses.
Yeah, so those match, I believe.
And if you're wondering where we're getting those, those points, the point five, the point 33, what it is, is our, our old code, which a lot of this is transferred from our old code. You know, it would be one per 250 or one per 300. And the consultant tried to normalize everything to 1,000, you know, per 1,000 feet. So that's why you kind of end up with some of these odd numbers.
I also think I want to bring up wherever it says one per seven students. That would be under business training, senior high, school and college or university. All list one per seven students. And I think that is maybe okay for senior high. But college and business training, surely that's low. Because most adults in the suburbs still use vehicles to get around. And one per seven students doesn't seem nearly enough, in my opinion. That was brought up in some public comments as well. Lodging, hotel motel, one per guest room plus parking required for a restaurant, bar. I've worked on several hotels and larger ones usually come with conference centers and different program elements. Would that parking for those facilities be counted under separate regulations?
Yes, so I shook my head yes. So if someone came in with a conference center, we would look at half of the conference space. Probably treat it like an assembly space on top of the requirements for the hotel and bar restaurant.
Okay. Other retail, comma, outdoor, under retail sales is just left blank. There should be something there. And there was also a public comment from Mark Daniel on religious assembly seating at point two stalls per seat. And I just want to echo that I also agree that a lot of religious assembly. I frequent various churches, Christian churches. But the, the design that's most prevalent is like non-fixed seating. So there's not pews in modern churches anymore. There's just, there's open assembly space, which would result in a lot of parking if you counted it per occupant under the building code, so. I basically just agree that we need to eliminate the per-seat reference and figure out another way to calculate the parking for religious facilities.
Yeah, it would likely have to be occupant then, based on that.
That's fine, I mean, if you, if you, if you can get parking for the, the building code required occupants, then it'll, that building will be set for life. Because I think it'll have, it'll be a generous amount of parking based on the occupants. That's all I have on the table.
Under, at the, at the top of page 93, the banks, credit unions, savings and loans versus alternative financial services was another comment. Why, why the difference there, 2.5 for one and 3.33 for the other?
Oh, yeah, that's the top of the.
That's why I couldn't find it.
Under financial services.
Yeah, I believe alternative financial services, specifically that 3.33, like the director mentioned, is because we were normalizing it to our existing code. I believe that's for the alternative financial services. And then the bank and credit union or savings and loan, the 2.5 is what we saw in other surrounding communities specifically. So, and I think those, the reason they're broken up, I believe in the use table, they're broken up into separate categories. I think the alternative financial services, and I came off the top of my head, include some of the, I believe it's like ATM only and some of the, forget the term they used. Gold places and things like that.
Pawn shops?
No, we don't, we don't allow pawn shops, I believe.
Like short-term, high-interest loan, like that?
Yeah, let me look real quick.
Like a, like title loans, is that what they're called, like car title loans?
Like a currency exchange?
No, more like title max, I think, or.
Payday?
Payday.
Payday loan.
That's, that's what I'm, I'm thinking that's what the distinction was, he was, the, one of the members of the public was getting at was if they're effectively serving the same thing, but one attempts to serve a lower income demographic, how can you be having it, you know, differ?
So, I believe Commissioner Sharp was correct. So bank, credit unions and savings and loans is one category. And the alternative financial service establishments include pawn shops, pawn brokers, established vehicle title secured loans or payday loans and similar services, community currency exchange as well.
So we're taking into account, it could be a pawn shop, which is very different, or kind of a different setup than you would at a bank or something like that?
And the last one, sorry, was on the next page, the cash for gold businesses.
Can I ask a question? This is based off of what we're moving towards. So these spots are calculated off of the nine by 18, not the 10 by 20?
Correct.
Right?
Yeah. What I'll say for the, for that in particular is many times we've seen requests for waivers from 10 by 20 to 9 by 18. And that we, I don't know if we've ever not approved one at the village board level. So we're just implementing what seems to be the industry standard for those parking spaces to not have people come in for one of those requests.
I'm not in favor of changing it. But do we know the surrounding towns?
Many of them are 9 by 18. When I say it's a minimum, so if a Costco came in and, you know, they have the extra large spaces, they can make them bigger as needed. We're not restricting the maximum, we're restricting the minimum.
Commissioner Peterson, 10 by 20 is a standard from 30 or 40 years ago. So a lot of communities went to 9 by 18 many years ago. I even worked for a community that had eight and a half, which was, in my opinion, not great. Because I would get door dings in my car all the time. Our current code says 10 by 20 if you are a, if cars don't sit. So if you're a retailer and you're, the average time that your, your customer comes in is the grocery store, then it says you should have a 10 by 20 space. It says any long-term spaces, which is defined as longer than four hours, can be 9 by 18. So most of our office buildings on Pasquinnelli only have a 9 by 18 requirement. Because the theory was is that you go there, you work your eight-hour day and then you leave. But increasingly, over the years, almost every proposal we see come before us is a 9 by 18. So it is fairly standard in other communities. And it's, it's hard to argue a nice, big luxurious space, no 10 by 20. But the intention of going to 9 by 18 universally is both, both representing the board typically approving those, the other communities that are doing it. And then also being business friendly. It requires less land area. And then for our shopping centers that do seem to have a lot of extra parking, by reconfiguring, they might be able to do an outlot. So they, you know, I'm not saying that these businesses would do it. But if Julosco could reconfigure, maybe they can get another lot in front of their business or, you know, over on the Cass Avenue side. Because by reconfiguring the parking spaces, you save space and then that space can be reutilized.
Scott, if I could go back just real quick, I'm kind of playing with my head a little bit when someone mentioned it before. For the hotel motel, it seems, and maybe I'm incorrect because I'm, admittedly, I'm basing this, I think, off Oakbrook when I had something. But usually it's less than one, with the concept being people Uber from the airport to or from, and take that into account. And I'm wondering, should we, should, should we look into doing that, lowering the parking requirement per room? But specifically mentioning here a requirement for employee, like, you know, if you do the same thing, like 0.5 per employee? And as well, I think you should include, where it says restaurant, bar, I think you should include banquet and conference center. Just in case you get a development, at least it gives them very, very good clarity that it's not just going to be the hotel and restaurant and bar. And if they want to come in for a variance, they, they know what they're asking for. But I think one per room actually seems high, given the shared riding environment that a hotel usually attracts. And I recognize if they use up, you know, we're not the city of Chicago, so they're not going to have a parking garage that you could easily just park your car at if they don't have it. So again, the market, I think, covers it as long as they're not stealing from their neighbor. But I would, I would like staff just to take a look at maybe some of the other surrounding communities. Because I think they're going, I think that's the trend I'm seeing. They're going lower on the per-room dwelling unit, however it's defined. But then making sure to allocate per employee and mentioning any accessory use or whatever else, you know, any other use, conference, office or restaurant, you still have to meet those requirements.
Yeah, we can certainly take a look at it.
Yeah, I think.
Is there, sorry, is there, like, knowing that like the zoning changes don't come that often? Like, but say like 10 years, who knows with ride shares and, and self-driving cars and things? Like, I don't, I don't know how long that these will be, this will last before that'll be, like, is there, is there any mechanism to say that these will be re-reviewed every five years or something? Or no? Is it just up to, just a discussion? I think I mentioned something like this before, maybe about flexibility, but is.
You can answer if you want to repeat.
We can amend the zoning ordinance at any time that we choose. Usually we wait to see what the trend is. So, you know, we talked about changing our fence rules, you know, a few meetings ago. And that's because we saw consistently the same type of variance requests were coming before us. And we said, when we start seeing a repeat of the same thing and general approvals for those, not denials, then that means that something needs fixed in the code. So you're right that right now, especially with vehicles, there's a lot of emerging trends. And this could get outdated or a piece of it could get outdated pretty easily. Sometimes it's, it's because we see the trend, it doesn't have to be occurring here, but we want to meet it head-on before it becomes an issue. Sometimes we're meeting with developers and, you know, a hotel could say, you know, but I can build this elsewhere and have a lot less requirement. And then we kind of do the research there. And sometimes we wait to see if we consistently are getting the same variance requests. But at any time, not only can staff bring forward a text amendment, but the petitioner can do it. So I know some of my veterans up here have seen where, oh, well, there's not a use that's allowed in that district. So the first thing the petitioner does is ask to have that use allowed in the district as a text amendment. And then they immediately say, and then if it's a special use, we're here to ask for a special use for it. So sometimes that's generated by the end user. So there, if, if a user didn't feel like that our rules on parking was fair, they could say, well, we're asking for a text amendment to amend that. So we're not asking for a variance to the parking, we're asking for a text amendment. So there's a lot of different methodology. But it's very hard to think in the current climate of vehicles that this will be longstanding without changes, so.
Just that, the method of text amendments, whether staff brought in or petitioner, that, that's always been, like, that's always been the case, right? And for the redoing the zoning code, and that was, how long ago was the last time?
Well, the, the last comprehensive one was in 79.
Right, that, so maybe, maybe that's just my hesitation of just not relying on text amendments when it seems like it's, that, I mean, it makes sense. But at the same time, I almost feel like somehow it doesn't get, hit the mark or something, or it doesn't. But I almost wonder if there should be like something set to force the village in the future is not to wait 30, 40 years, but rather like to just do a check or something, or something every five, 10 years. I would almost think, just to make sure. Because I don't, also would think is that, say, there's, you, you mentioned that the process, that a business will come to do, say, a text amendment. But, but really, the process to a lot of businesses might be, instead, they would, they would take a look at our zoning code and just go to another village, not even bothering with the text amendment. Like they, there could be businesses that might be leaving, like, that don't even come knocking on the door. Because until there's, until it's more favorable, do you know what I mean? So those are just some of the thoughts in my mind. But I, I understand that, I, I don't disagree with your process. I just wonder if there's something that should provoke the village in future years. Especially if, if there's a board that's not as open-minded as we are, like in five, 10 years, that like might just say, oh, no, everything's fine. And then we, that we get a stale and aging zoning book again. Anyway, I'm just trying to future-proof the village in a way.
The one thing I'll add is throughout the years since 79, we've had basically whole chapters almost rewritten in the zoning code. I know Joe tackled the signage stuff years ago. We had the wireless telecommunications stuff added. So we've looked at it in pieces before, which we will, you know, continue to do with maintenance. I think after approvals for this, we'll have a maintenance period, probably closer every six months, to reexamine things that may not be working perfectly.
And sometimes staff sits idle in the zoning ordinance for decades. You know, if you don't have a new church that wants to be built or a new church that comes in, that's when you discover, oh, this really isn't on trend with what happened. It's, it, you want to be proactive. And, you know, rewriting the zoning ordinance is kind of a long-range planning thing. And, you know, we typically employ current development planners, looking at permits all day long. So it's, it's something that is really driven by the department and ultimately the, the board. So you're right, though, that we wouldn't have gotten where we were today and have to put so much time and effort to this if we were more proactive, so.
And again, it's just a thought that in like five, 10 years, might be a whole completely different staff, top to bottom, the whole village, who knows? And it might, it might not be as open-minded or as willing to make. And it might, it might not be as open-minded or as willing to make changes and so on. And as a resident, I'd like to think that, that the village is always on our toes to keep things fresh.
I'm assuming that's something that the village board would have to impose on the billing or the planning department, right?
It, they can. I think that it's, it's typically tackled, like, you know, so you have strategic plans and comprehensive plans. And usually in those, they say, okay, we, you should look at this every so often. So, you know, as soon as we adopt this, we're going to shift gears and they're, I think they're, they've got an RFQ out right now for the village's strategic plan. We'll follow that or even pair that with the comprehensive plan. And although there is some involvement with this, this group for the comprehensive plan, it's the time to get active and pay attention to that and ask if there are, you know, goals of requirements. Just as an illustration, our comprehensive plan was last done in 2013. In a perfect world, you update that every five years and we're just getting around to doing it now. Sometimes other priorities happen, so. And actually with our comprehensive plan, we, like a lot of communities, wanted to wait to get through, because just before the COVID era hit, we were dealing with the Amazon effect of retail kind of retracting. So no one really wanted to make a leap until everything settled, you know, to, otherwise it would be outdated the very first day you adopted it, you know, because everything was changing, so.
Scott, I want to just go back to something because I realized I actually like the language that is used under manufacturing industry. For craft alcoholic beverage producer, it's half per employee plus one space per 100 square feet of interior seating area. And I'm one, I, I understand exactly what the concerns are for restaurants, and I want to reiterate kind of what Commissioner Lynn is saying here. Sometimes you don't know what you're missing out. You don't know if someone left or didn't even come to Westmont based on looking at the code saying, I'm not going to deal with the zoning. And one of the difficulties with the restaurant business, especially if you're using an existing building, is you're, we're requiring parking that maybe is storage or a cooler, emergency exits based in that number. And I think a good way of doing it instead would be to change it to seating area, like it says in craft alcohol beverage distributor, not to be confused. So one is under commercial, under eating and drinking place. So what I'm thinking, I, I recognize bar and tavern is separate, but I'm, I'm thinking for the restaurants, the craft alcohol distributor, and even the producer, I kind of think, I, I think we should, I would suggest blending the language, and I think what they should do is half per employee to account the fact that people might ride share to work and one space per 100 square feet of seating area, whether it's interior or exterior, it doesn't, it shouldn't, I actually think we should remove interior because if they do have an outdoor part, it should, they should still need the proper parking. But I think that that would give the flexibility, and I know Mr. Danny also pointed out, but I've, I've dealt with that firsthand, so I actually know the struggle that some of the restaurant businesses that we've represented in the past, that, again, the issue is really retrofitting a business, right? If they're building it from scratch, they're going to do it usually the most efficient. But if we have a building that's vacant and a restaurant's even thinking about taking it over, I try to want them to, you know, at least come in and talk to us, not just immediately say, ah, this isn't going to work, because I think that would be the most business-friendly. No one's working in the cooler or in the hallway without being an employee. And so I think that, I would suggest maybe Steph, look at that and maybe revise those. And I know these kind of trickle down to other things too, like the gamings and stuff like that, but that might be a better way of doing it because I think the point is, look at who your customers are and what's the parking needed, look at who your employees are and what the parking needed is. At the end of the day, I would agree for a restaurant, that's more important than the overall square footage of the building. It, it's more about the, the actual, where consumers are going to be and how many employees.
We'll take a look. We, it's, we either implement it like that or we list out exceptions for storage areas or kitchen areas and things like that.
Yeah. Along those lines, I, I spoke to another architect friend of mine that was doing, designing at Dave and Buster's, it was another part of the country, and talking to the, the city, which I think was out on the west coast somewhere, but that they, they came to an agreement not to apply the parking requirements to the actual areas of where the arcade machines were, they were able to exempt that. That are, that are, it was like, maybe it was either applied to parking or applied to bathrooms. Either way, it's like, it's a similar type of method of looking at square footage and things. And I, I don't know if, yeah, just as you said, is there an exception to, that could maybe be, be applied to anywhere, that things can be somewhat negotiable, but I don't know, that then, that just makes it blurry though, too. That makes, maybe, but I, I understand the other counter-arguments, you put in a bunch of exceptions and then things are kind of difficult to, to keep clean. But, 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 but yeah, I, I think you get, you understand the idea of like the parts of buildings are not being used or accessed, don't you think?
And I would, that should be figured out beforehand, right? How you, before you receive an application, there's the methods for figuring out the area for each of these uses, if it's an area-based.
Yeah, what we, what we do is we, in our pre-application meetings, we send them basically a free review, saying we're using these methods to calculate. So they're aware.
But what method does the fire department use for maximum occupancy?
They, they use a different code, and I believe building even uses a different code for occupancies.
And I don't think anyone at this table can tell you how that's calculated. We're, we're not experts in that. I, I do want to say, so what I'm hearing is the, the push-pull of this. If you relax it to be hyper-business friendly, because you don't want to scare people away, you potentially then have an underparked piece of property. If you have it too high, you know, then, then you have too much sitting there that's unused. So, so I, I bet even if I, I open the debate of St. James Crossing, which is kind of at its maximum bursting at the seams with parking, they're always filled with cars. We, we have businesses that look at locating there, and that's one of the first concerns they have is like, parking's kind of limited here. We don't want to create codes that then makes the shopping center less desirable because there's not enough parking, but we also don't want to create a sea of parking around it. It's, it is a hard thing to navigate sometimes.
At what point does the responsibility start to fall on the business owner for making the decision to open a business there and off of the village for creating the rule or bending the rule? Like, we can have a set of standards, which I think is what we're trying to accomplish. Ultimately, if somebody wants to open up a restaurant with, you know, you know, eight parking spaces, that's up to them whether they want to do it or not. And hopefully people park on the street or they walk there or what have you, but, you know, to a certain extent, it's on the business owner to make the decision whether it's going to work for them or not.
And I think there's a good balance there in doing the seed of, because we, that number isn't out of nowhere, right? One per thousand, the concept is, one car per, or 10 cars, sorry. So I, I like the one per hundred, it's the same, right? One per hundred, 10 per thousand. The idea is whatever's being used is, that works as long as you count the employees. And so to me, if you, I didn't even think about the bathrooms, but that's a perfect example. Counting the bathrooms, storage areas, cooler areas, emergency exits, and just a foyer area even potentially, which I recognize that could or couldn't be counted depending. Now you've got people doing DoorDash and things like that. Part of me thinks this does need to be updated. And again, if they don't meet the mod, they're not going to miss it by one or two, right? They're going to either try and pack it, it's not going to work, and they're going to have to come in for a variance, but at least they're coming in front of us. There's not a restaurant in the world, well, I shouldn't say it. There's not a restaurant that I would see here in the suburbs that is not going to recognize they need parking. In the city, just like we were talking about, you could get away with it, there's places, street parking, parking lots, all the rest. Here, you don't want to park here and walk to DJ's. You know, you probably don't even want to park at Mrs. T's, is that what the, Mrs. T's and walk to DJ, or, you know, vice versa. We're not walkers in the suburbs like you are in the city. So I, I think that would be the goal. I just want to make sure we see what, we don't know what we're missing if we don't kind of adopt it. And if it gets out of line quickly, I think then we revise it. But I definitely think if we want people coming in, that's a lot of sales tax, there's revenue, there's alcohol, and I think that's definitely helpful in the budget crisis we've seen at every level.
So there is, the, the building code, like model codes, do have specific types of spaces that you don't, you don't have to count any occupant for. So utility rooms, mechanical rooms, stairwells, corridors, things like that are not occupied. They're just serving occupied spaces. So the village could list at the back of this table, here are all the spaces that are exempt from the, the calculations so that they don't even have to call, they can just figure out their, their own selves, how many spaces do I need? You've already told me you're not counting my mechanical room as, as area.
Yes. What I will mention, and I don't think this changed from the existing code, but that we do have provision, 9.03(c), area measurements, it defines area measurements. That does exclude some of the horizontal areas, like the basement and things. But we'll take another look at it as well as we look through. Anything else related to, I'm going to say, up until the drive-through provisions? That would be nine point...
I have something on 9.04.
Oh, for sure, yeah.
9.04, at the very section AD, it was public comment on why are we requiring existing multi-tenant centers to provide additional parking regardless of their current parking numbers? And I think that's a relevant question.
Are you saying why are we?
We're saying that if you expand, you must provide additional parking. But what if a facility already has adequate parking?
Oh, you're saying if they're already over the amount, the minimum?
Yeah.
We wouldn't. I think that's how we would implement that code specifically. So the multi-tenant centers is something that was hashed out, I think, in 2020. And we're rewording it a bit, but we can reword it to be more clear. But I think that's how we currently utilize that section. We never had to, I don't think.
Yeah, I would just reword it together if I...
Anybody else with 9.04?
I have just a question on 9.04d2. This is talking about shared parking. Mark Daniel brought up the term collaborative parking, and I wanted to know what the village thinks, because I don't understand the difference really between collaborative parking and shared parking. In our code, it says shared parking means different times of peak parking demand. So these uses marry together, kind of dovetail, and that is a concept of shared parking. Is there another concept that we don't, that we're not? Okay.
No, not that I'm, not that I'm aware of. I don't have his letter in front of me, but I remember reading that and thought he was talking about shared parking.
I'm not a traffic engineer, so I don't know off the top of my head.
I don't know of a different, a different term that would, that would be gainfully employed.
But, but for either or both, it's different times of the day. Is that the morning school?
Well, different times of the day is what we mean when we say shared parking. That's why we want to allow it, because you can utilize two different uses.
The daycare center and the dance academy, two different times a day, same parking lot. That would be shared or collaborative for both.
Versus, what do we call if it is a strip mall and that whole development is sharing parking?
That's a multi-tenant provisions.
So that's not covered under D.
You'll see cross-access agreements where they have parking overlapping. So I believe like the Jewel and I think it's Skyzone or Micro Center likely have a cross-access agreement to some degree. Now, whether that includes parking spaces, I don't know. But they usually have something recorded against the, against the property.
Scott, I remember reading this one from Davis's. Do we offer a, a reduced parking requirement if we allow them, if they're using shared, shared ride somewhere? I, I think, I think what he's getting at is if you use, if you make it available for like a, I don't even know what the example of the, you're taking an Uber there or if like your, your restaurant, you use Grubhub, right? The idea is that that space is dedicated but being shared versus what you would see on like a reciprocal easement, like you see at the microcenters and the Jewels. And I think all he's saying is, in his letter, it should be defined differently. I think if, if that's the, if the village is inclined, if Steph's inclined to follow that, I think we just need to make sure that you, you match. If you change the definition, you just match whatever you're doing. So you call that collaborative.
I think there's, so we have car-share service, which is what I believe you're speaking about. And then we have shared parking. I think he was trying to say we should re, or to change the name.
Change the word so that shared parking is a zip car versus a microstra, micro-center and Jewel is a collaborative parking?
Yeah. We can look back and see if we need to make changes based on how others define it. I'm not too inclined to change it at the staff level. We're the ones looking at the code, and I think, in my opinion, it's pretty clear. I don't think it causes issues either.
Section 9.05, location of off-street parking, use of required off-street parking areas. Oh, sorry, never mind. I, I was jumping in my head to on-street parking.
That's okay, because I do have a comment for 9.05. We are also looking at changing, I think it's off-site parking, which is 9.05b, and when allowed, so that it reads more of, right now it says the zoning minister is authorized to allow all or portions of required off-street parking for non-residential uses to be provided off-site in accordance with the regulations of this section. And it gives those, those requirements. I believe we're going to be changing that to not uses but districts. So it'd be non-residential districts. So that would allow, for example, a property in the downtown, that might be a mixed-use property, to have some off-site parking. That might not be strictly continuous to the property for their needs.
It already says for non-residential.
So what we'd be changing is non-residential district, so the B1A is not a residency district. As proposed, or the B1, it's a commercial district of some kind. We're working on language right now with the consultant to change that a bit. Anything else for 9.05? Move to 9.06. I think it's just one or two paragraphs. I'll move on to 9.07 then. This is the section where we're talking about parking area design, and it's largely moving a lot of engineering stuff into the zoning code where it's near the parking regulations. Those are your, your radiuses and radii and aisle widths.
I do have a comment on 9.07, the table 9-2. I hadn't noticed this table before, but just a quick look at the 90-degree parking, one-way aisle width, usually, I mean, I've seen that many other places reduced from the two-way aisle width, which makes sense, so something less than 24 feet. To recognize that it's just one-way traffic.
I'm looking at the diagram. We can re-review and see the industry standard.
Yeah, because if it is, if it stays 24 feet wide, it's essentially going to become a, a two-way aisle. So it almost needs to be less to encourage the proper traffic.
Any other items for 9.07?
9.07H, about the stacking for businesses or the business vehicles. I think that there was a good point raised by Daniel on that. If you're an employee there and you need parking for employees, park in the back. You should be able to count those as two spots, because the way, unless he's kind of reviewing this incorrectly, the way I read H is that if you have two cars in a tandem spot, they have to be able to go through on their own. We wouldn't count it as two spaces. So if we say, you know, .5 per employee and whatever, they need two spaces, we aren't allowed to count a tandem spot. I think that's reasonable. We shouldn't allow it for consumers or customers, but I do think if you're an employee of the business, that that would be appropriate. You know, the manager sometimes is the first one that unlocks and employee parks behind them if they're.
They park a lot like that downtown, in the businesses in the back.
Right. And so the way, if they're parked tandem, then it doesn't count as two spots, the way this is written. It only counts as one.
Yeah, I'm rereading this. I do think it needs to be adjusted. Right now, I actually think it's only written in a way to allow it for dwellings.
It is.
That's how it's written right now.
Yeah.
So if we want to look at allowing it for commercial purposes, that's, I think we can have that discussion. But the way it's written out, right now, it's basically for your, a lot of times we see in the downtown for your second units above. For residential, where you're kind of limited on parking, but you might have two people in one household in a unit, and they can have the tandem because they are in the same unit, so they can talk to each other and move it around. I don't know how comfortable it would be for commercial.
If it's limited to employee parking only, which is hard to monitor, and I think provided it doesn't inhibit emergency access, because that's what you can see at some of these places, where all of a sudden they're blocking a back alleyway or something because of the way they've stacked their employee parking, seems reasonable.
And that's my thought, just like a unit owner, they'll have access. But it doesn't mean you just get to take a spot and turn it into a tandem. They still gotta follow whatever the fire code or whatever layout has to be for emergency access, because again, same concept.
Yeah, our code doesn't trump any other requirement.
Correct, right. I would not be a fan of allowing employee parking tandem, just because I think they should get their own accommodation. I'm thinking at lunchtime, I'm in the first spot, but Johnny's already left, and now I'm stranded, I can't go get my sandwich. That just doesn't appeal to me. I think fleet parking makes total sense to allow tandem parking. But then you also have to examine the wording around fleet parking, because some of our, some of the language about the size of vehicle is, can it fit in a parking stall? So now you have to consider what, which kind of parking stall are you talking about? The tandem kind or our regular nine-by-18 kind? So I'm supportive of fleet parking for sure, just not any employee or certainly not customer parking.
I think for commercial, it should count as two though, because that's huge how they do it in downtown businesses.
What we could look at implementing is restricting how this is implemented in the downtown districts to be allowed.
Oh, maybe.
In some fashion for employees and residential. And then I think for the fleet, we could also look at the fleet. I don't think I'm comfortable to allow it for anybody, so a patron to use.
I agree with that, because that is, if there is an emergency or someone does need to go somewhere, they're a patron. A business has access to the people that are there. So in the example of Commissioner Sharp, if they're gone, that car is usually gone. Right? So if your car's blocking me in, you're usually then in the business.
Sorry, so I should change it, so Johnny's gone.
So Johnny's gone.
He's disappeared, and, because he doesn't actually work. He just slacks off, and I can't find him, and I need him to move his car. So it's just annoying to me.
But they do it all the time downtown.
But that's up to the business to figure out with their employees if you're considering allowing it.
I'd rather have the annoyance to the employee of the business than to stop someone from opening the business for not enough parking, especially as we're considering doing buy right in the downtown district. I think we have to, I don't think we have this, we have to get creative in what we're gonna allow to meet the requirements, otherwise.
Then new developments, like the director said earlier, like these buildings have to be resilient. So if the new development comes in and they maximize their lot relying on tandem parking for employees, and then that really prohibits future uses, because now they don't have enough regular parking. That's my concern. It's a really risky business to me, doing tandem parking for employees in commercial districts, because it's just the resilience of the building drops significantly for other uses.
Aren't we making an exception if they car share by half?
For?
The argument would be made the same way, though. If we're going to allow that, that if you take an Uber to work, we're letting you have the number of spots that you need to have. So in theory, we're already doing it by allowing that.
Well, I think, so the car sharing is specific to cars provided onsite. I don't think it includes ride share. So it's your zip cars, I think Envoy's one of them, the ones that are housed onsite.
No, I thought, but what I'm saying is if we allow it then, and someone builds a building, with that in mind, and they leave, we're retrofitted based on that layout. We've already agreed to reduce the parking based on that initial layout, so it's kind of like the same, I'm just trying to give the practical side of. Like the counterpoint to Commissioner Sharp's. I understand the, you know, scenarios giving, I'm just pointing out, we've done it for that, so I don't know which one, I guess, is the better balancing it.
What is, what is this car share service? I thought it was Lyft and Uber and?
No, that's your zip cars. So those are the ones, you see them a lot on college campuses when students don't have their own car, but they live on campus. And you rent it out onsite, and they have to return it within, you know, an hour or two.
It's also common by train stations, because the idea behind it is you live in the city, your office is in the suburbs, you can take the train and it still avoid the hour, hour-and-a-half commute to the city. Take the train, take the zip car to wherever you need, without having to sit on the highway.
And I think some of the other ones, like, for some of the larger office complexes in town, they have shuttles from the train station out to their office. I think in those scenarios, because we don't know who the next user might be if they're building a new building, I think it's warranted for them to come in to ask for variance, to explain if they're doing that service.
Mm-hmm.
And they want the reduction. What we can do is, we'll look, we'll look around again, we'll talk with our consultant, because I think you both raised good points.
And maybe it's kind of a district by district.
Yeah, that's what it seems like.
Yeah, you did that, the downtown district, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it. Moving on to 9.08, accessible parking. Any comments on that one paragraph? Basically states you have to be in compliance with the state requirements.
I agree with some public comments that only two stacking spaces for car washes seem a little.
Oh, you're moving on to 9.09?
I'm sorry.
There, you're fine.
I have no comments.
We'll move on.
I have no comments for accessible parking.
Moving on to 9.09.
The car wash seems a little low. And the drugstore seems a little low. Again, obviously, just opinion.
Yeah, so right now, we do not have any stacking requirements for any drive-through in our code. A lot of newer uses are strictly drive-through. Your Dutch Brothers and I think, was it Brew seven or something? Where we're seeing other communities have a lot of issues with those type of services, where it's just, you know, the small building, and then they have basically unlimited drive-through options. And those are filtering onto streets, backing up traffic. So these are implemented to try to not have that happen, is the hope. What we did was we looked at some of the ones that have been implemented in neighboring communities where we know there's been issues, and tried to have kind of stricter requirements where we've seen those issues. And we looked at our consultant's industry standard stuff that he's implemented elsewhere. We're in a suburban community, there's a lot of drive-throughs, a lot of drive-through requests we get as well. So we can certainly reexamine any of them. Related to Sharp, when you say car wash, do you mean just the automated?
The automated pull-through.
Well, I know that one car wash on Cass down by 63rd, when it's busy, they stop on Cass Avenue and block traffic.
Where they do it by hand, the?
King car one?
Yeah, King, yeah.
Not the new one. And that, that's been like that for as long as I can remember.
Maybe I wasn't looking at the right row. It's got, maybe four is fine.
Yeah, you're talking about two?
Yeah.
Or just a customer operator.
And I believe that four per entrance is, a lot of the newer car washes have like four entrances, so each one of those would have four. It's not the entrance into the main facility. So I believe that, so Commissioner Peterson mentioned the new one that's down on South Cass. I'm going off memory, I think the stack, we do have two stacking requirements in current code, and that is for those kind of car washes, and I believe it's based on how many cars can fit in the car wash at any given time, and then it's a multiple, like a three-times multiple. And I'm glad to hear the one, the new one doesn't seem to back up, because
I've never seen.
There is a lot of stacking parking that we required on that one.
They have three lanes, and there's probably three cars that fit from the entrance of the car wash back to the gates of the three lanes, and then there's like probably seven or eight cars back towards Cass.
There's like 30 or 40 queuing spaces on that one. And it's based on how many cars can actually fit in that car wash at any time that are being serviced, which has always been a little bit excessive. So the other one is we do have four banks. I believe it's like seven.
I think it's just ATMs.
Yeah, okay. That we have a very excessive requirement in our current code for banks. So if you've ever been, you know, the bank that is across from Jewel, Osco, you know, you wonder why they have so much space for cars. And I don't think many people do, they're banking, you know, in person anymore. So that seems pretty excessive too, so.
Anything else with 9.09?
Just to confirm, Scott, what's bank now? We're bringing it down to, or Joe?
Correct.
We're going from seven to four?
Yeah, I think it's down to four.
It's almost happening, okay.
And then for the ones that are just ATMs, it's, I believe, even lower. I think like two.
Yeah, because if the ATM's full and you're not waiting, you keep driving. When it was a drive-through and it's open, you had to get there before the holiday, so I get it, that makes sense.
9.10? These weren't really touched much from the current code. All right. Move on to Article 10, which is tree preservation and landscaping. So some of the updates for this section, we've included provisions that exist in Chapter 80 of our current, I believe it's our tree and landscaping chapter in the municipal code. We've moved some language over related to the trees and landscaping, because it fits better in the zoning code, especially when talking to developers. We updated landscape regulations to require a portion of a proposed development open space to be landscaped, updated parking lot landscape requirements, including landscaping islands for parking lots that are larger than 20 spaces, and requirements for visual screening, and enhanced street-facing landscaping. We've also implemented some administrative ability for staff to permit alternative compliance measures, as long as those compliance measures are of non-invasive species. So I will also add, so we don't have to come back to it, in the last part of the chapter, please, appendix A, we have a list of landscaping recommendation, so of planting recommendations for trees and shrubs and grasses and that stuff. Right now, we don't have any recommendation lists.
Of species?
Yeah, right now, we don't. I'll take that back. We do have some for the tree, specifically for trees developed by our forester, but nothing for other landscaping.
And this original one isn't super old, right? I mean, John did this.
A year ago?
Oh, this one?
Yeah, so I think some of the language you'll see related to, I believe it's 10.04 and 10.05, and maybe 10.06, is directly translated from what those amendments were that were done, probably over a year ago at this point.
Yeah, the interim director and village forester worked pretty diligently on a lot of these pieces. So what you'll notice is we don't have any landscaping code in our current zoning ordinance. It is actually embedded in a couple other sections of code. Having worked in many other communities, our landscape requirements have always been very deficient. So I say deficient, someone else could say business-friendly, because they don't have to install as much. But, you know, we do see a lot of the Environmental Improvement Committee moving towards trying to protect trees and save trees. So we are beefing up some of our requirements here, not to the level of some other communities that are much higher. The illustration I like to put out there is, if you've ever been to the shopping center over in Willowbrook that has the Chick-fil-A, and look at how much landscaping is on that intersection there, and then go and look at our new development at Market Center, 63rd and Cass, there's a big difference, in that we are already kind of on the low end of what we require for landscaping. So this is moving it into the zoning ordinance, creating minimum requirements. We transferred a lot of the tree preservation, tree stuff, that the forester had worked really hard to get put in place, and without trying to go over the top, because Westmont does have a lot of small sites that are hard to inject a lot of new landscaping into. So that's why you're seeing a lot of this in here.
Related just to the trees, there is at least one, I think, minor thing we're gonna be changing, which is related to tree protection, removal of snow fences as acceptable.
Yeah, there was some old language that we found, got copied and pasted. It doesn't match what the forester has, so we have to correct that.
Is John Eater? Did you have more?
No, you're good, good to go.
Section 10.04, paragraph C, I think the village is changing the unit of measurement from H to caliber. Elsewhere in the code, so we just need to update that reference.
Yeah, I thought it was somewhere around. No, you're right. We're going from DBH to caliber size.
Yeah. There's also a sentence in this paragraph that says, "If the property cannot accommodate their replacement trees, the village may allow payment in lieu of..." So how do we define cannot accommodate? Is it a financial, we cannot accommodate? I guess which would make sense, or we want to build a bigger building, we cannot accommodate? Who decides if it can be accommodated?
So whenever we get a project in that has removal of trees, we send it out to the reviewer, who determines that, specifically for private property trees. So this has nothing to do with right-of-way trees. That's still in the other chapter of the code, of the municipal code. I believe for replacement, it's specific to if it can't be met because of whatever they're doing, they can provide. they can provide cash in lieu of planting the tree. We've seen it with, they're, because of the caliber size of the tree they're removing, they need to add so many that it's not feasible that all of them will grow to mature, maturity. They'd rather take in the fee, plant a tree elsewhere in the village.
So the process would be, they can build up to their max bulk standard, provide the parking required. After that, they would have to provide trees up until where they can't fit them anymore.
To a degree.
Yeah, just generically.
Yeah.
I mean, I support that, I just want to make sure people are not trying to skimp on trees for other, other reasons.
Yeah, and I think that's up to the village forester ultimately for the amount.
And we have an awesome forester.
Yeah?
Yeah, so he's great for the village.
Can I jump to 10.07?
Yeah, go ahead, we'll just kind of go through.
10.07, section C, paragraph one, applicability, reads the residential landscape regulations. This section applies to all residential development except for detached houses and multi-unit residential buildings. And then paragraph D says, "Non-residential and multi-unit residential landscape regulations." So I think we need to cross out multi-unit residential buildings from C.
Yeah, that was a carryover, that should be removed.
And then in D, it says this section will apply to all residential development and all multi-unit. So I think we need to eliminate "and" all residential development.
Oh, you know what, sorry, I'm gonna backtrack a little bit. So the way it's laid out is, so C is residential landscaping, so it's except for multi-unit residential, it's because multi-unit residential is in D.
Okay.
So that's included in D. It's basically, we're treating multi-unit very similar to commercial.
So we just need to eliminate it from C?
Well, I think, I think it's same, except for detached and multi-unit residential buildings. So the applicability for residential landscaping do not apply to multi-unit residential buildings.
What do they apply to?
But they apply to D, which is non-residential and multi-unit residential landscaping.
But if section C is residential, but it doesn't apply to a detached house, and it doesn't apply to a multi-unit house, what does it apply to?
That's your attached row homes, those type of ones. So multi-unit is your apartment complex or condo complex, specific.
I guess I would just, it's easier to read if you state that in the affirmative. It's for this specific thing.
Yeah, we'll clarify.
And then, section D reads, "The regulations of this subsection apply to all residential development and all multi-unit residential development and mixed use." So we need to eliminate residential development.
It should state subsection. It should state except residential development.
That's all I have for 10.7.
I saw Lynn, Commissioner Lynn?
No, I mean, I, I, I don't think it was mentioned, but like, I, I just know of other towns, there are some towns that are very, very strict with trees, and one in particular stands out is Palest Park from, I was told, from, I heard from builders, is that anytime for any reason that they cut a tree, that they, that they owe the, the village like a, a good chunk of money based on how many inches the tree is and things. But that's, is there, is there anything in that, in that nature in ours? Or can, like, I would, I would, I like the idea of like a homeowner having the right to do whatever they want on their own property, type of thing. So the, there's not, there's not, there has not, I just, I just want to confirm that there's no changes where like a person can't cut down their own tree, correct?
So what it is, is the, we have some exemptions for, I think it's buffer areas around a house, basically portions where you would see buildable house that aren't included in the provisions, basically. I think it's to accommodate people who will exercise their private property rights. I'm not fully up to date on the tree code though.
So, so what you're talking about, there is a tree ordinance that is not in zoning, that is not regulated by this commission. And it is, it is very much influenced by the forester and the Environmental Improvement Committee.
Sure.
It is still, it has requirements that if you take a tree down and it's considered a heritage tree, you can only take it down under certain conditions, which basically it's where you need to put the house or a buffer area around the foundation. If it can be saved, they want it saved, if you're gonna take it down, you pay a penalty. And that, that, that is what the board has approved and supports. So, nothing we're doing here will, will change that, so.
What's the penalty, what type of penalty, financial penalty?
Yes, well, it's, it's, first is a replanting, but when you're taking down a big oak tree, you know, and it says, well, your option is to plant 40 three-inch caliber trees, you know, I don't think most homeowners are gonna plant 40 trees on their lot. Usually, it's, it's a monetary penalty that comes down. It used to be really restrictive here. And with the last update of that ordinance, which is what the previous director worked with the forester on, it was greatly relaxed, but it's still there, and it's still, it's always gonna be a hurdle for developers, which is what the board wants, the board wants people to still try to protect trees and think thoughtfully before they indiscriminately start taking them down.
Anyway, either way, it's not part of this zoning.
Correct. So whether we feel strongly that it's restrictive or not, it's not the commission's decision on that one.
So if I wanted to cut down a tree, say, this summer, and I call you guys, you would forward me to, to who?
It's, it's, if you're talking about on your residential property, if you read the letter of the law, and this is, this is not my code, so I don't know it nearly as well as some of my codes. It would say that you can't take it down if it is a heritage tree. But at this point, we don't know if it's a heritage tree, so we can give you as much information as possible, but we're not gonna come out on your site and inspect it. We would usually refer that question to the village forester to try to field that. But it's basically as much information as given. We are pretty clear that you can't take them down in advance of a permit or tied to a permit. If you're gonna come in and get a permit, leave all the trees before we can do an assessment of what is allowed to come down and what's not allowed to come down, so. I would say we are, we are the trendsetter in this area for that. I believe it was mirrored off a lot of the north of Chicago communities, you know, that, that. Yes.
So this has nothing to do with planning zone, it's not even in our purview?
No.
Okay.
What, what we have in here is basically, if you're gonna take down trees on a site and rebuild, you gotta kind of replace at a 50% rule. But you're gonna have tree requirements for any development, and you can count all those new trees against the penalty that you have for taking down the old ones, which generally tends to balance out. So that you, you know, unless you have a heavy, heavily forested property, that's there. But the larger projects, they all go through a pretty rigorous analysis of the ones you're taking down, the condition of the trees, is it in a billable area or not? We have lots of exemptions, so if it's in the detention pond area, it can come down because stormwater in that case is more important than saving the tree.
If it's rotting and potentially hitting the house, it could come down.
Basically, we require a tree survey, which includes condition, so. It's, it's, it's much more flexible than it used to be, so.
Is there, sorry, is there any properties in the village that are not, not being developed because of the fear of the penalties against cutting down the trees? I just know that down Fairview, south of 63rd, now that might have been Downers Grove, I'm not sure, but there was some properties, they, they have been built on now since, but they were very heavily wooded. I remember using, I would drive by and think, I, I used to think that they are not being developed because of the, the money cost, just to cut down trees is expensive, not, not to mention penalties on top of it. So I'm just curious, is there any, is there any properties in Westmont that, that are almost penalized, like, so, so harshly penalized that they, they, no, that they're not being built on?
Only one stands out, and that is, we had Nature's Best try to build a parking lot behind them on, there's a vacant residential property that is on Linden there, and there's like three big monster trees there. And I think they went through the approval process, found out how much it would cost to take those trees down, and then decided not to do that, so. There, there is always, for those situations, they can always ask for a waiver, those fees to the board. And the board can take into the economic, you know, like, how, how important is the economic piece of the project to go towards that? So we have had people, so we approved a townhouse project, and the vacant lots over here on Burlington, just across the tracks, they needed to take down one of the parkway trees, which had a penalty, and they asked for a waiver to that, and were granted the waiver because the, the board wanted to see that project come out of the ground, so. That's still a viable option, but in this forum, we're not gonna be able to remedy that, so.
So any other comments on 10.07?
I don't know if I'm still on 10.07.
I think.
Yeah. Just a thought that section E, 7B, landscape materials and design, maintenance.
So that, that is page 10 dash nine?
There you go, that's much easier. It says, "All pruning must be done in accordance with ANZEA 300, standards for tree care operations, pruning." I, I think that is hard for everyday people to consume, and they don't obviously have copies of what that, they don't, no one knows what that means.
So what I'll say is for maintenance, maintenance is very difficult to handle with code.
Yeah.
So what is and isn't maintenance? The requirements for the maintenance is when there's an approved landscaping plan specifically.
Okay, so this isn't like existing homeowners, you, you need to educate yourself on ANZEA 300. This is for professionals. Okay.
Anything else with landscaping? We can move on to signs if not? Alright. So Article 11 deals with signs. There are not major changes to this section, like I kind of mentioned prior. We did a pretty extensive update to this not too long ago. I don't know how many people were here for that on this commission now, but they were pretty long discussions, there were multiple meetings related to just signage. We did have some provisions changed, just for clarity and to reflect internal policy related to signs, there's some minor changes. Other changes include, we've expanded the list of prohibited signs to include flashing LED window borders. We've updated how we take measurements of signs to provide benefit to the business or property owner. We created new sign exceptions and allowances for business grand opening, grand openings, so they can utilize those provisions without, within a specified time period. And then we've also created allowances for downtown buildings that have, for the rear of downtown buildings to have signage.
So, since I went through an extensive, I'll never let that down, but, so for those of you that are newer, it was probably 2016-ish that, when I was the planner, I was tasked with updating the sign code. We are fairly liberal with what we allow here, especially in comparison to Downers Grove, who's very restrictive with their signage. Couple of the points from that, that, that the board at the time felt were, were very strong was that they wanted individual letter signs over box and cabinet signs, and that still is reflected here. What we have been criticized for over the years is that we are a little too restrictive when someone has a grand opening, because we don't allow a lot of like the feather banners and other things that you see in other towns. So we created some allowances for those feather banners in relationship to your grand opening because we didn't want to penalize businesses. We are correcting a couple of things, you heard Scott say. One of the prohibitions is the LED sign, or the LED lights. So in the last 10 years, we've seen a lot of businesses that use the super bright LEDs and kind of put it around the border of their front windows, and you can see it from three blocks away. So we have restrictions on that because that is operating like signage, even though it doesn't say the sign, it's operating like signage. So we've done some accommodations for what we've learned over the last several years, but without taking and making any of this a lot more restrictive, so. Because if we're gonna make this a lot more restrictive, we want to, want to take this out to the business community for their input. In 2016, when we did these, I think I had no fewer than a dozen meetings between our Economic Development Committee that existed at the time, the Downtown Business Association, the Community Development Committee, planning and zoning. It was a very extensive process because we didn't want to do anything that was offensive to the business communities, so.
Commissioner Sharp?
I have comments on 11.02, down at R, which is what we're just discussing, lighting around the border of a window or outlining an architectural element or feature of a building or other structure except for temporary holiday lighting and seasonal decorations using unshielded, low-intensity lamps, typical of holiday displays. So what we're saying is, like a, like a DJ's bar cannot put Christmas lights around their window permanently as a permanent installation, right?
Correct.
Even though it's not the same as the bright LED flashing perimeter.
Correct.
I would just be open to see what other commissioners think about limiting of Christmas lights anywhere. I'm also concerned with the language about not outlining architectural elements or features. A lot of homes around here like have spotlights on their homes.
But that's on the ground. I think this is talking about lighting on the building itself surrounding an architectural feature as opposed to uplighting from the ground, isn't that correct?
Well, I, I think the, the first confusion is, is it's prohibited signs, and there's a general, whether it's not stated or not, it's commercial properties, so it wouldn't be applicable. We wouldn't call a light on someone's house a sign because it's in a residential zone.
Well, that's another confusion, is why are we talking about lighting under this section at all?
Well, I believe the reason we're talking about is because the general definition of what is a sign is also basically it's attention-grabbing for the business. So it's not just the lettering, so if I wanted to put an old car in front of my business because I was a mechanic shop and, and painted it orange or didn't paint it orange, that is a sign because you're trying, you have it there specifically to aver- you have it there specifically to advertise your business. So, I believe that's why the attention grabbing lights were put on there. So, there was a period about six years ago, where a lot of the businesses started stringing the Christmas-style lights. And one of the main issues with that was that it is, that type of lighting, because of the cords, are only UV rated for so long out, outside, and that's why you can't just use Christmas lights all day long on the building. So, that was put in here to try to remedy that issue. And reading it now, it feels like it, and Scott, maybe you could chime in, would, do you think that this would prohibit the downcast lighting, like we have on Freddy's? So, they have it up on their, the top of the building, but we made them hide it and downcast it as a wash on the building, so that it didn't broadcast up?
No, I think, um, it can be clear, it is not meant to disallow that type of lighting.
Okay, because I don't think that's, I don't think that's offensive to us. What has always been the issue is when you can see the light source, then it means, it basically means that it's emitting so much light that, you know, it's in compliance with our lighting standards.
What that particular, the architectural element is, when you see, you know, a snow cone or ice cream cone on top of a building used as a sign, and it's lighting it up. I think one of the car washes has a fake water tower on it. It's to prevent those type of cases, where we've gotten complaints regarding that type of lighting in particular.
Oh, so you wouldn't allow that?
We wouldn't want it knocked throughout, because it's supposed to be cast it up, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Back towards residential, usually.
I just don't feel comfortable with, I think that language needs to be defined much more around what we really want and what we're trying to disallow, because a lot of, a lot of buildings are designed with accent lighting.
Right.
You know, and we should permit that while keeping our goal of not bugging other, you know, adjacent uses and...
Yeah, what I think the intention is, is also, when you have, like, you can border a window with LED lighting, and it flashes. When I went to USC, every single convenience store had them in the area. Vade stores are notorious for having them. You also see them on the exterior of a building as it goes up. So, you have it on the corners, basically framing the building with LED lights. You don't see it too much here, but you see it in the city a lot. It's just another mechanism for advertising.
Yeah, see, that's hard. That would be a poor use of lighting, but there are good uses of lighting, very similar to it, like where you have a reveal in a building, and you want to highlight that reveal at night with an LED strip. That's not, it's not, the bulb is not visible, right? It's just grazing the wall with light. So, I want to be careful that we're not limiting designers and architects from doing their job the best they can.
Yeah, we can look at providing clarity on it for what our intention is.
Can I, can I divide this out and try to get some better guidance? Are we in agreement that the high-intensity LED lights that businesses put in their front windows to try to attract attention is offensive, and we want to limit that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I think that gives us some better direction with that piece of it. We'll look at the architectural piece of it, which I hear what you're saying, and make sure that. I do think that it probably would say that you can do that, as long as you don't see the light source and it washes down, or if it washes up, it has to have some limiting thing that stops it from going too far out. Because we are trying to also accommodate the lighting stuff, which I don't think we've got to the light.
Yeah.
Dark sky. Yeah, well, we're not, it's not dark sky, we're not going there, but we are trying to move and get some tenants a dark sky into our code, so.
Does this also apply to residential, like detached, where they can?
No, this is specific to commercial aspects.
Okay, so...
So, for like a home occupancy, they're not allowed it?
The way I read it, I just think it should be clear that this is not limiting me from highlighting my bush in my front yard with a light, that's all.
I think there's...
If you're not selling it, the bush, I think.
Right.
I think that the clarity that needs to talk about is that this lighting is when, used in conjunction with a business.
Advertising.
Yes. Yeah. The way I read it is, there's nothing that indicates it's strictly commercial. So, in my mind, I'm thinking, if I go to Costco, get those strips so that I can put it in my house and never have to go outside in the waiter to put them up, I'm not allowed to do that, because it doesn't specify here that it's commercial only. Also, do I...
Do we have, it might be in the later sections, we talk about lighting, but do we define what low intensity versus high intensity is, just so that, you know, if someone comes in with really, really bright holiday lights, well, how do we define high intensity versus low intensity? I think I know what low intensity would be, I just don't know, I don't have nearly the experience.
I'll try to have the answer for you by the time we get the lighting, how's that?
I think it was 101, Lightbulb was the reference.
Then does that change if it's an LED and...
There's, I mean, it gets into...
The lumin output, the brightness output, yeah.
Like what they were talking about before. I think a metric, but, I mean, it's difficult for people to calculate, is what they call foot candles, which is like, how bright a candle is one foot away, and then that type of, they still use that term for lights and things. So, I don't, I don't know how to calculate it. There's people that do that, what they call photometrics, so I don't know what you'd expect of a homeowner or a commercial. Unless, do you perhaps know, I'm, it's, there's like a science to it, so I don't know.
I forgot those equations a long time ago.
I'm not worried about the equation so much as just if we're going to define it, let's put, where someone could look and say, "What intensity is this?", and I can look at the box and say, "Hey, I can buy this", and it's not going to be a problem.
Yeah.
Whether as a business or, because DJs would like holiday lights.
The Village had Christmas lights on their trees all year round.
And again, you need some discretion, too, what's temporary, what's reasonable, you know?
Yeah, we can, we can make clear, we'll rework some of it. Any other comments related to prohibited signs? Since we're just on this section?
Well, getting past lighting, I, one question popped up in my mind, going through all this, is an inflatable rat a sign?
Good question.
Should, if it is, should it be or not be regulated?
Jefferson there, by the way.
Well, we've had people get creative with what is a sign? So, does it have lettering on it, advertising a business on the premises? And it's permanently displayed outside? Yeah, that would be considered a sign.
I...
What if it says, "Not permanent"?
Doesn't pay fair wages on the...
Yeah, that's...
Right.
That's where we're getting into legal.
Now, you're saying temporary versus permanent.
Right. Someone's not hiring union, they come up with that. They're allowed, that's protected by the First Amendment, and they're allowed to do that. So, I agree with you on that. My question would be, one of the more humorous things I saw was when, back when Oberweis was running, he did it right before Thanksgiving, and then he put an inflatable turkey, an inflatable thing, so it looked like a big cornucopia almost.
I get collage.
So, you couldn't tell the difference, you're like, "What's going on here?", which, but in my question is, so is one not allowed, and then the rest would be, or do we just want to stay clear of it until that presents itself? Yeah, I'd just stay clear of it, because I think we could start over-regulating and think of every possible scenario, I think some reasonableness is going to come into play.
We'll soon have a rat looking in this window.
We've had plenty of those up and down Ogden and elsewhere, and always let them go.
Any other items for prohibited? We'll go on to 11.03, sign exceptions.
Just a grammar error, paragraph E, first sentence.
Which, which paragraph?
E.
Yes.
One sign, including an electronic display, is permitted...
On per?
On per fuel pumps.
And it should be, including "an" electronic display, right?
So, it's one, one per fuel pump, is it?
Yes, "and" an electronic display.
We, I will mention, just for the sign exemption, exemptions, there were some lingering sign code related to content-based stuff that was rehashed to make it a little more legal.
For those, my new folks, if you have to read a sign to evaluate it, it means it's content-based, and the legal world has said, "We can't do that." So, sometimes, it'll say, like, real estate signs, it's like, well, to read it, you have to know it's a real estate sign. So, it's more generic in a lot of respects, although I think real estate signs are one of the exceptions that we can have in here. So, just the courts have told us what we can and can't do in a lot of these cases.
So, you're saying you can't control the content of a sign?
Correct. The only time is if it's purient in nature, or like offensive, which is hard in today's world to say what's offensive anymore, I think.
And courts have even said, at least on residential property, that offensive signs can't be regulated.
Yes.
That have like swear words on them, for example. It used to be you couldn't put political signs up like 90 days before, now I think you can have them up all year, or all time, whether there's an election going on or not, right?
No, I don't think so.
A lot of towns tried to stop it, but I think...
Basically, yeah. There's exceptions for both residential properties and commercial properties that say signs, non-advertising in nature, can be up. So, that would probably fall under the non-advertising, because they're not trying to advertise a service or a product.
Oh, okay, I thought you were talking about political.
Yeah, so, well, it's, it's...
When there's an election, isn't there standards for that? There used to be.
Yeah, so, in the early 2000s, there was a court case that changed everybody's signage code. Basically, every sign code was illegal, for the most part. So, you saw basically, almost every village or municipality update their signage code because of that court case, so.
Likely when you worked here.
Yes, there was probably requirements related to size and content.
There was a time period.
A time period, yeah.
So, now you can have a...
I believe so, yes.
Wow.
Any other comments related to 11.03, the exception, exceptions?
I do, on paragraph L, L1, it says, "Grand opening signs are allowed for 14 consecutive calendar days, beginning on the first day of the business being open." But I think a lot of people, a lot of businesses would want to promote before they open, so that people get ready, you know, it's, you know, to build momentum. So, I think we should just strike that, leave it up to them to decide, and they should start that 14 consecutive days.
Calendar days, period.
So, it's tricky. The reason I say it's tricky is because I don't think we're requiring any permits for these grand opening events, so we won't know when the clock starts, that is why it's based off the opening date, because we do take in business registration items. We don't want to put another, another thing they have to submit a permit for before they open, or to get them on the end during a code enforcement issue.
So, I'm sorry, I want to build on that. People can get temporary banner permits in advance of an opening. What we were trying to do was, typically what happens is, business gets their CO and suddenly opens, and then we get complaints that come in to say, "They've got all the signage that they just put out there, that 15 minutes ago, when we told them it was okay to open, wasn't there." And we're like, "Okay, well, we don't want to create a burden where they have to run to the village and get permits, and tell them to take it down until they get the permits." So, what are, what are reasonable accommodations that they can do without a permit, but it does not preempt them from getting a banner up with a permit before the grand opening?
And a banner would just be like a smaller, basically a smaller sign?
Basically, it's a 32 square foot, so it's, it's, I don't think that the exceptions for the grand opening signs are any bigger, so.
They can also put a window sign, right?
Yes.
I mean, like, just like what you have over here with the dance studio, where it says, "We're moving",
Yes.
You can do that, even though you're not open at the next one.
You can do window signage without a permit as well. So, basically, what we were trying to do is be business-friendly, because I remember when the convenience store that's right around the corner from us, the first day it opened, suddenly they had a bunch of stuff out there, and my code enforcement officers went over and said, "You can't do this, can't do that, can't do that." We're trying to figure out what they can do. And actually, the idea is that when they get a business registration issued to them, on the backside of that is, "Here's what you can do the day you open" type thing, so.
That's good, okay.
Then I would think we should move on to 11.05. Any comments or questions on 11.05? These are additional regulations for specific signs and types, largely unchanged. We try to make it more, more into bullet points than narrative.
Okay, if you have the rear building and front building, and you can put a sign on both, but you can only use the measurement from the front building?
So, it says, however, the rear, so, let me read the whole thing. If the portion of the building that faces the street is considered the rear of the building, is that the part you're talking about?
Yeah, but you...
But, in architecture design, with the same material integrity as the front facade, then one additional sign facing the street frontage is permitted. However, the rear building frontage is not count when calculating, allowed gross sign area permitted. So, that's an existing calculation method that we have, we can look at it.
No, I just wanted an understanding, because I would assume you could put, you would, you know, use both...
You would use the frontage, and then it would just be taken out the front, and basically you can use a portion of it on that, that's the architecture design.
So, whatever the front facade was, if you wanted to get a front and back sign, they would have to be smaller. It'd be one square footage or whatever, and that measurements for the front and the back.
Are you talking about specifically the downtown ones?
I don't know, go by...
So, C is completely new, related to, like, the alley facing ones.
Why? I just didn't know that's the way we did it. I always thought, like, if it was a corner building, you use both.
Correct, for the corner ones, we do.
Oh, okay. Okay, I was just curious, that...
Yeah, we can look, we can look at for the downtown ones, if we do just want to give them a allotment based on the rear facade.
Why would you need any restriction at all, front and back? Two totally different...
So, what we do for calculating is we use the frontage for any sign, so they get a percentage of what the front is. And then you take, you have that overall sign amount based on the frontage, the allotment, and then you would take, let's say, 60 square feet total, you use, I don't know, 40 square feet in the front. In the downtown, you can use 20 of that in the rear.
Okay. So, Commissioner Carmichael, the idea behind that is that, especially in the downtown, do you want a big bright sign on the backside of the building that's now looking in a residential property? That it's a secondary entrance in the downtown. Why would a business want to?
We do have some that have entrances in the rear. What's the new alley? What's the new alleyways and the parking lots that are now in the rear? We do want to encourage more entrances of this.
So basically, what, what.
But that's, that's lighting more than signage.
That's what I was just about to say, too, is like, what, maybe, I could understand not having it lit, but you could have, you could still have a big non-lit sign, can you? Or no?
There'd still be restrictions on signs. The, the intention is not that the back of your building is the front of your building. The intention was that if you have a secondary entrance and you want to, and you have the benefits of the one, like the Village Home parking lot, that you have a way to advertise yourself back there. It was never intended to mimic what you have on the front.
So we had, we had, I don't think many of the commissioners that are on the commission were here at the time, but we had a bakery that was proposed in the downtown and they wanted a rear-facing sign. We said you couldn't have it. They decided not to do it at all, even though they had a rear-facing entrance, basically directly into the parking lot. So instead, their patrons would have to go all the way around and try to find them on Cass Avenue rather than just going straight in. So it's to encourage those types of signs.
And the other thing I want to emphasize is, so where this measurement first came in, I feel like we're going back to the same buildings tonight, was the building that has orange theory in it. That was one of our first buildings that we let get set so close to the street. Um, and the way the signage rules read at the time, it said, "Well, you're allowed a sign on the, the street side." We had no exceptions for the fact that the parking lot was behind it and it didn't say they could have a sign on the interior parking lot. And the thought at the time was, well, on the street side, that's where you want to grab people's attention to let you, let them know where you are, but then you need an identifying sign once you get in the parking lot to say, "Well, which was that business?" And so that's where the first measurements came out with that. But we also did a lot of research on how many square feet per that frontage that you get, and we landed on two square feet for linear foot, which is kind of at the high end for the western suburbs. So we're already allowing a tremendous amount of signage. So if you drive through Downers Grove now, you're seeing the Walgreens sign is about half the size of the Walgreens signs that we allow here. We allow a tremendous amount more with our general calculations. So the thought at the time was, well, we're already allowing a lot more signage than other communities are doing. If the business wants to allot some of that signage allowance on the other side, they can do that. So.
That makes sense.
We can, we can debate, I mean, we're happy to debate it, but at the time in 2016, there was a lot of discussion about it, so.
I'm fine with it. I was, I was just looking for a little more clarity.
Because the, the businesses were most fearful that we were going to take and retract the amount of signage they were allowed to have. So we were very clear that we didn't want to retract the amount of signage that they were allowed to have, but we were trying to accommodate these new situations where we're getting where our sign code doesn't allow a second sign on the backside of the building. It's only attributed to frontage or corners. So we were trying to create those allowances there without just allowing them an equal-sized sign that potentially is facing a residential area.
Yeah, the, sorry, and sorry if I misunderstood. So they could do a sign on the back and that's based on its own calculations for the back? Or is it that it's based on the front calculation and it's like, where you, you had to take some of the front to give to the back?
Uh, I don't have that answer for you. It's.
It's the second one.
Is it, is it the second one?
Oh, yeah.
Because I think it's different in the downtown versus.
Yeah, for the downtown ones, it's taken as an allotment of your frontage. So like, like if you had 60 foot, square foot sign you were allowing the front, because your building was 30 square feet.
Okay.
The facade was.
30 linear feet.
Linear feet. You got a 60 square, 60 square foot sign. On the front, or you could split it so it'd be 40 in the front and you have a 20 square foot one in the back.
Great. A 60 square, a 60 square foot sign is, is really big, really?
Correct. We, we are, like Joe said, when this was discussed before, we had, we're one of the larger, whenever I have a, a sign company call me, they're surprised at how much we allow, but it was kind of dissected in that, the amendments we did not too long ago.
So for a 30-foot wide, like, property, that you could have a 6-foot by 10-foot sign?
Correct, 2.0 times a linear feet.
The, the trade-off at the time was what the board was pushing for was individual letter signage. So if we're talking about a box cabinet sign, the old-style signs, a 60 square foot is huge. When you're talking about individual letters, it's still big, but the lighting effect when they're lit is more nominal than one of the cabinet signs.
Because you're measuring by rectangle.
Yeah.
Measuring the rectangle around.
Correct.
So there's a lot of dead space in a, an individual letter sign that, that's there, so.
Many of the permits we have are, that are based head-scratcher's on our, in the offices, signage. And how to measure and how to dissect it and what is and isn't allowed. We have some properties that have four frontages or three frontages, so it could be difficult.
It would, it just seemed kind of strange that the, the back isn't on its own calcu, like, formula, like, separate from the front, not that the, that the back takes away from a percent, like, from the front.
We, we can look at changing that if the commission wants us to, because that's new code, so.
Yeah, that, that's just my, my, my impression, just in this discussion, no, so, I mean.
It, it, it basically was is that every business should be entitled about the same amount of signage, but it's based on the width. It doesn't double the amount of signage you have because you have a back door. It's, it's, one is so that people going down the street can find you. The other is just an identifier to so you knew where the door is, so basically. And because the backside of, I mean, in Westmont, most commercial properties along 63rd Ogden, like, on the other side of them is residential.
Yeah.
So you're introducing signage facing residential. So we were very cautious with what we could do there, so.
Yeah, I would, I would almost would think that there'd be a different set of formulas or what for the rear-facing sign, maybe even not, not having it lit might be one, one aspect. And then, and, and yeah, I could understand if, if it's smaller in scale.
Yeah, and, and it's very hard to navigate, because, so, for example, in the downtown, I would think they want it lit, because our alleys aren't well-lit, you know?
Right.
That, and a lot of our downtown businesses are restaurants, and so they're open well past dark.
Yep, I agree.
So it's, it's kind of hard to put up that restriction, so.
Yeah, you can't say not lit. Thank you, yeah. I guess as part of the downtown, maybe, yeah, I would recommend these alleys in the downtown get lit.
Well, and honestly, a lot of this is generated from the fact that the village built the Lincoln lot and we're like, well, we really would like businesses to start improving the backsides of their buildings, which really don't look all that great. And if they are going through the effort to create a secondary entrance to try to attract people when you park your car back there, to go there first, they should be entitled to a sign. Where the, the generation of this came from.
Thank you.
Questions, comments on 11.05? Moving on, we can look at 11.06, which is construction standards. I do not think those are changing. No comments? Move on to 11.07, which is maintenance. We, I believe, um, I think we, we just clarified some things related to maintenance.
Well, I believe the big strikeout is basically code enforcement can handle it. We didn't quite know why it was written in here that the zoning administrator was regulating the safety of structures, so.
Uh, 11.8, which is abandoned signs that has not changed. 11.09 now takes you to actual non-conforming regulations instead of its own subset of regulations. And then 11.10 is permits related to signage. We are looking at removing the, I believe, temporary sign and banner fee related to these, so that might be a change. We still have to discuss it internally. It's $25 flat fee right now, but it's a pretty simple permit turnaround.
Well, I would be a strong advocate that we strike it. I don't know why we're listing a permit fee in the zoning order.
It's from the original code.
Yeah, it's from the original.
It's not on the fee schedule, so. Uh, and then the rest is, changes on how we're measuring signage and how we determine building frontage and window areas. Right now, we have pretty vague definitions and measurements for signs. These are a bit clearer and give infographics rather than just rely on narrative.
And so, um, just if everyone's got their books, on 1113, it says individual letter sign at the top there. Our old measurement methodology is we draw a box around the entire thing. So if I drew a box around the individual letter sign, I would count all that dead space underneath individual, but the new measurement method allows us to basically draw a polygon around it so that the person is not penalized for all that dead space that's there. So it's, it's becoming more lenient. So not only do we still allow two square feet per linear foot, which is very generous, but we're making it a bit easier and our measurements beneficial to the businesses.
So we can strike out the smallest rectangle and say smallest polygon?
Do you have, to make clear, we can do that. Any other comments on that section?
I guess, I think that makes sense, but I can imagine if a person really wants to go nuts with the word polygon, they could, and if, if there's no limit on sides, they could just trace each.
Yeah, well, what we'll probably do is kind of say that it ought to be a mishmash of rectangle and polygon, so it's rectangular in nature.
Rectangular polygon.
There you go. All right, moving on to the next article. This is general development regulations. So this relates outdoor lighting, other developmental standards like underground utilities, street access, outdoor storage of junk debris, and sight vision triangles. Make sure I'm in the right area. Okay, so the changes we're making here are, this is where we're seeing basically a complete overhaul of outdoor lighting regulations. We currently only have, I believe it's two clauses in our current code related to outdoor lighting. We're trying to implement some more regulations related to it as directed to by CDC and others. We're updating requirements for photometric plans and allowing for alternative compliance measures, not just relying on photometric plans. And then we're updating intersection visibility provisions to include alleyways, which right now we only have for streets, for those corner vision triangles.
You know, we have a resident letter regarding B9 paragraph, discussion 1500 lumens and equivalents and so forth. Have you taken that into consideration?
That'd be, uh, you said 12.01B9?
Yes.
Yes, that was our.
Do you know the letter I'm talking about?
Yes.
Yeah.
We leave it up to the, I think, the commission related to changes of that provision. We're trying not to over-regulate a lot of residential properties. We're trying to keep it related to commercial properties for the lighting. We don't want to undo burden on any private property rights. We do have concerns with, you know, lighting and safety as well. We want to be able to allow lighting for safety measures. We've had a lot of instances, luckily not in Westmont, but in the near suburbs, related to safety issues on Ogden. So we do, we do think we're within the realm of ability here related to the residence requirements.
So, so I just want to add, I'm sorry if I'm interrupting. So our old lighting standard basically said, "You can't have any light that exceeds your property line." And we use photometrics to show us that it's zero foot candles at the property lines. And that was the extent of our lighting regulations. Didn't say anything else. We're trying to balance introducing regulations, some goals that the Environmental Improvement Committee has to move towards dark sky. So you'll notice, like, especially on the light fixtures, it has light fixtures that are not recommended versus recommended. Recommended is not a requirement, it is a recommendation. So we're trying not to, first off, we exempt in 1201B, it says, "Outdoor lighting regulations is, of this section, apply to all outdoor lighting except the following." First one, it says, "Outdoor lighting on lots occupied by detached houses, semi-detached houses, or two-unit houses." So it does not apply to everyone's house. So basically, it applies to residential that we regulate, like commercials, so you're multifamily, and businesses and such. So when a new business is coming in that's doing new lighting, we would look at these standards. It is a balance between what the business wants, because obviously businesses want to be as bright as possible, especially our dealerships, want as much lighting as possible, with trying to get some of the tenants of the dark sky, which if, if you're not familiar with dark sky ordinances, it's, it's a movement to try to make it so you can see the stars again, which is very hard to do in the Chicagoland area, but it is very popular out in Colorado or in New Mexico type thing. But there are genuine environmental benefits to that. So we do have commentary from a resident who's also on REIC that, you know, has a recommendation for 1,000 lumens, not 1,500. I believe what we have here proposes our language is what our consultant found as the most prudent and commonly accepted general language, and by no means are, is, are Scott and I lighting experts. So we can debate any of this to any degree. I do caution that this would be on new businesses, not existing businesses, because this could easily become a code enforcement thing where someone feels that their light, you know, someone's, someone's light is too bright. And we are not properly equipped right now, number one, to have people working at night when you have to measure those things, or, you know, with the right equipment to measure those things. So we want to be very cautious with how far we go with this, so.
Can I ask about the exemption number one? Which is outdoor lighting for detached houses, semi-detached houses, two-unit houses?
Yes, you may.
Are there, no restrictions?
Uh, for outdoor, for those type of facilities, no. I do not believe so.
May I suggest a lumen limit, because in another community where I do some work, I've had people come in complaining about either security lights, what they claim are security lights that are permanently on, that's a big beam shining through their window from their neighbor's property, and unbridled lights where it could be overkill.
I have, so, and I don't know the answer to this. I have, so, and I don't know the answer to this. Do we talk about that in performance standards at all?
No.
Okay. So I'm open to it if the commissioner feels it's necessary?
Counsel, can we, can we just cover it under a nuisance, where the remedy would still be nu? My only concern is I have some neighbors that redid, like I'm just giving an example. They fixed up their house and they did accent lighting that's on the second story. If it's more than 1,500 lumens, are they now nonconforming? Or, you know, if they're, they also back up to Pasqualelli, so there's some people that are always there that shouldn't be blowing off fireworks, so they want it lit up because they know there's people there. Are they prohibited to doing that? Or is it complaint-driven, so it's on the books, but unless we get a complaint, we're not going to inform? So I just kind of, and my thought is if the neighbor's doing one that's in my yard, it's a nuisance, and I try to, complaint-driven, and say, hey, it's escaped, can we still use that if we keep this exception?
The lumens limit, as I understand it, would apply to an individual bulb as opposed to the collective amount of bulbs?
Yeah, so it's fixture.
So I, yeah, or fixture. So I think having a reasonable limit like that, and you could even add language about, I don't know that you necessarily want to shield security lighting, because that might defeat its purpose, but even have an allowance for brighter security lighting that's motion-activated, so it goes on and off, or it's not permanently on, something like that. I don't think we want to overly restrict lighting, but we may want to consider whether, you know, how to respond if we get complaints. Can we have some regulation so it's not too, too bright?
Has there, has there been many complaints?
I do not know.
There have been complaints. And Commissioner Simpson's right, with the LEDs and the intensity, you know, we do get them more often.
And they're from detached houses in somewhere that's affected?
And so, and maybe this is for John, you know, as the community development director, I also oversee code enforcement. I cannot create a burden on code enforcement, because what this doesn't do is it doesn't say, well, when did they install that light? Is that a nonconforming light that was allowed to be there before? Did they just change a light bulb in a light fixture that was always that bright? I hesitate. It might be a nuisance code, but not a zoning, is where I'm going with that. Because I have been on the receiving end of, your light is too bright. Well, my garage has been broken into three times. What are you trying to say? I can't protect my property. And that puts code enforcement square in the center of that argument between neighbors. So I understand that we want to try to find a remedy, but we haven't fully vetted that out in this.
Fair enough.
So.
Maybe nuisance code, and you suggested that.
Exactly, maybe, maybe what we do is we look into putting either a photo, not that we're going to do a photometric, but if a neighbor comes in and there's a limit of the amount of light coming on my property and it's yours, that there is a point where that does rise to the limit of a nuisance.
Yes.
And that it's set. Because my neighbor, I have an elderly neighbor, she just changed to an LED. I could see it in my, through the back window, to the point where I thought it was actually my light on. But I also understand she's very uncomfortable, there's been people walking by on the side, and she's nervous. So it doesn't come into the bedrooms, it doesn't cause an issue, it's pointed at her building. If that wasn't covered or directed that way, if it was upward, it would be a nuisance then. So I could understand exactly what counsel's saying, is like, how do we do it? I would just try to hit the nuisance side so that we don't overburden you on, when was it installed? At the same time, come up with maybe what do other communities do when, hey, when the photometric or whatever the lumen requirement equivalent to be, what hits here? If there's a complaint, it's deemed a nuisance.
Yeah.
Then either you cover it, so you've been broken into, fine, that's fine, put the covering down, still light it up.
And then I guess if we do that, we could always add a cross-reference in the zoning ordinance for that section that says, see chapter 38 nuisances. But since we don't have that drafted, I don't necessarily want to add it now, because it may be a year plus till that gets done.
Again, another public comment on paragraph F1. All fixtures except motion detector activated lighting must be fully shielded so the element is not visible to an observer at any property line. Again, nuisance lighting, even when intermittent, can still be problematic to neighboring properties. When using the prescriptive method to demonstrate compliance, it would be difficult to determine whether a proposed non-shielded motion-activated fixture would comply. That's what we've been discussing. So 121 light trespass would have to be regulated by code enforcement, using a light meter.
Any comments from the commission on that? That was a public comment for us before.
Yes.
Do we want that changed at all, that F1?
Yeah.
It's specific to motion-activated.
So, just from my understanding, I'm sorry, I took a second to read through it.
Yep.
I'm thinking of residential house, I know it's not applicable, but, you know, your fixtures are there, it's not shielded, it's simply out and visible on all four sides theoretically. That would not be allowed for commercial districts or for multifamily properties, right? The way I would read it is everything would have to be shielded or essentially recessed to be used as a shield. So the same fixtures that I have, you know, I'm sorry, am I making sense where it's like maybe above your garage door or next to your entryway doors where, you know, you can be seen at least on 180 degrees? There's nothing covering it or pointing downward, it is emitting all over?
What that would be for is obviously new buildings. It would include the commercial buildings, multifamily. It would be that all fixtures have to be shielded except for those. The ones, the motion-activated ones would be the exception.
They don't have to.
They would not have to be.
And we're seeing, is that the trend that we're seeing for a lot of municipalities in terms of the, I know the shielding is trying to stop the light nuisance, so I understand that part. What I'm curious of, and I'm going to defer to the architect commissioners here and their expertise, is, is it practical where there's no, you know, if we're aiming to renovate the downtown area, every light that's installed is expected to be covered other than motion detector? Is that practical? And is that the trend you're seeing for commercial as well as a downtown district? Because to me, if you're putting, you know, a modern-looking light, most of the time, I don't see the shielding as much, I just don't know if that's.
It's, I think, good lighting design usually does not, you try to hide direct view of the fixture. You don't want, because it's so bright staring at the bare bulb, it just creates kind of blind spots when you stare at it, so you try to, you do try to shield it somehow. That's my experience.
And the shielding aspect is also an environmental aspect. When you're shielding down, you're not disrupting the birds migrating as well.
But you can have a sconce on your garage or by your, on your front door, which is a bulb, and it has a frosted glass lens or something which diffuses the light, so that would still consider it shielded, even though it's not a black, it's not a blank-off shield, it's just translucent.
Yeah, so if you look on, what section was it?
And that's what I have in my head, a sconce, that would be.
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking.
We have recommended versus not recommended type of lighting. I think it's a bunch of infographics and types for shielding and non-shielding. Generally, what we're most concerned about is shield, we want to shield it down. We don't want it just, the light to basically move to the property lines because it's oriented up.
Not recommended, but does that mean they can do it?
We did go back and forth on this, either requiring or not requiring. I think we left it as recommended versus not recommended, because there might be other lights not specifically shown here that we're not thinking of.
Oh.
So it's to allow some of the ones that we might, might be newer down the road, on the next facility.
Okay.
With F1, that, just, I'm sorry, that only applies to commercial properties and that's what you're reading, right? F1?
Yeah, so it's F1, so 12.01F1 is the specific regulation. I believe, yeah, those are specifically for the commercial properties.
And, and pretty much, I know that they're existing and that this would apply to new buildings, but pretty much all the dealerships would fail this, right?
It would be very difficult for many of the dealerships that we have in town to abide by this, to a degree.
If they put up a new lamppost on one of those dealerships, would then, would then they have to abide by this?
If it's a new lamppost, a new area, we would like them to conform to the new code, yeah. That's, as well for our current code, it's the same way.
Like a new lamppost on their existing lot?
Yeah, so if it's a new lamppost in the area that didn't have one before, yes. If they're either switching out a fixture or something, no.
No.
Can we integrate it maybe over time? Because now what I'm concerned of is if we have another dealership coming in replacing an existing dealership or a new one moving in, someone's going to be required to be very different than the rest.
No, it would be in the nonconforming, so they would.
If they take over an existing site.
Correct.
But if there's a new person that wants to come in, they're going to follow with this one.
They would have to, yes. And then if they need variances, because they can't meet it, they'd have to come in and ask for those variances. Generally, we've seen a lot of variances approved along the major thoroughfares like Ogden, because they have street lighting usually, that's already on the commercial corridor, so. Where their lights aren't introducing additional lighting into the right of way.
Scott, I do think we need to look at this to see if we need a triggering statement. So, so for example, my concern is, I have a dealership that has light poles in existing locations, which can't even be retro, like if they want to change out the heads on their light poles, can't even be retrofitted to meet these conditions. And it seems like they shouldn't be penalized and say, well, no, because you need to move that light pole 20 feet further back, because there's no way you can sightline from the street or, you know, from standing there. Because those poles were built in specific places that probably can't be accommodated here. So whereas I think that new development, and we might need to define new development, should abide by this.
Or replacement of a light fixture.
Well, and it's even harder replacement of a light fixture unless you're replacing the whole pole.
Not every light fixture's on a pole.
Yes. But I can see a dealership wanting to change out and be energy efficient and change out the heads on all their poles without doing the poles themselves, that it won't abide by this. And how do you tell that dealership or business, I'm sorry, you need to lower all your poles, you need to move some of the poles back? That would be my fear, is that they're, they're performing more of a maintenance act because they're not replacing the whole pole at that point, or, you know, something. Just how do, John, I don't know how to navigate that, so.
It's kind of, I think new development is kind of easy to define or just reference new development, but I think you could have language about nonconforming light fixtures and switching out of, fixtures have to comply with this unless it's impractical to replace, or to place a compliant light fixture on existing light poles, for example.
Okay.
So I think we can somehow wordsmith that.
Okay.
Sorry, just, I know, like, maybe, as car dealerships, gas stations would be the same, right? I mean, gas stations, they're a glow, and they kind of should be, because like, there's so many people in and out at night, that you want, you almost want, safety sake, for every car to see every other car coming in and out, I would think. But, and I would almost, I also think that this is almost written more to protect residences, but there's, there's nothing about protecting people. This is just from any property line, even if it's property line against Ogden, like, where people in the middle, if there's someone, cars in the middle of Ogden, I don't think they care about, I don't, or maybe, maybe it is a safety sake thing, but like, it doesn't really, this isn't written for the benefit of like protecting the light spilling onto Ogden, right? Or, I mean, it's not, but yet this is property line, which includes the property line against.
Well, remember, the village's standard, photometric standard for decades and decades was zero foot candles at the property line, and Ogden has since been developed fully and, I think for the most part, has complied with that. So I agree, there's probably some pre-existing gas stations that are lit up, and someone can always come in for a variance if they have a special situation, like a new gas station wants to open and they need extra lighting for security reasons.
I will just note, for light trespassing, that's what we call it in the new code. It says lot lines, and it's specific when it says adjacent residential zoning districts. They have to be at 0.5 foot candles, and then for other zoning districts, it's 1.0, and then on the right of way, it's 1.0. So it does distinct based on the adjacency of those.
Related to that, I've got two questions. One, when measuring foot candles at the property line or however we do it, does it take into account if there's a street light or other ambient light from other sources? How is that taken into account?
I think it's in the measurement section. I don't recall off the top of my head, I'd have to reread it.
I've seen this, I thought I had read something about that, I just can't remember also. And then, in the B1 district, we've got basically zero foot setback lines, like a foot, front yard setback. So a building's going to want to have lighting that's basically going to overhang, oftentimes gooseneck lighting onto the public right of way. Are we worried about every new building in the downtown exceeding the standard when they're built to the lot line?
I would answer that yes. I'm worried about it exceeding that standard. I'm just very, personally, I'm very hesitant with some of this because of the effect that... So you were asking measurement. I don't believe I even have a tool to measure, so, and to back out the ambient light that might be coming from something else, I don't, I don't have an effective tool for that. Now, historically, the way we've dealt with this is when a new project is coming in, we ask for a photometric done by a professional. This is venturing into stuff where we don't have subject matter experts, and that worries me, that we're creating code that requires that. So maybe I'm saying the loud part, or the quiet part out loud, but, so I apologize for that.
There are photometers or whatever they're called, that you have to calibrate, and I know, you know, a good attorney on the other side is going to cross-examine the code enforcement official about their training and how often it's calibrated and where the measurements were taken, and, yeah, it can become a mess if it's not drafted correctly.
Okay.
That said, I'd rather have some reasonable standards on the book than no standards.
Yeah.
And we can always retain an expert if needed.
I agree, it's to kind of go more towards compliance and find favorable outcomes between neighbors potentially than necessarily, hey, this is what we need to get, not a conviction, but finding liable. That would be a good move.
Yeah, I think if we reasonably take a measurement using a $30 photometer that we buy at, you know, Home Depot, the bills would have, will have proved it's prima facie case, and it's incumbent then on the property owner to, you know, prove otherwise. So I'm okay with this in concept and, you know, get. So, I'm okay with this in concept, and, you know, got a few worries about the B1 district in particular.
Okay.
Can staff just take a look at maybe if there's another community that does address the issue the same way?
What, what I will say is, there are few and far between.
Everyone's waiting.
We'd be on the.
Well, we're a progressive community, according to the.
We, we, when we're looking at communities, there are two communities in the Chicago line area that are considered dark skies compliant, where you need to steal some language from. We had our consultant rework it a bit better within our community. We're basically being directed to have these in, um, from other bodies, governmental bodies, so committees and commissions.
And again, it's like a balancing of interests, because dark skies makes sense, but I want them, we want them to go to energy efficient bulbs if it's needed, and if they have to change it, we don't want them to then not do energy efficiency, because then they'd have to change it. And also, I would imagine that many dark sky communities don't have multiple car dealerships with bright, bright lights.
Correct, so the ones, the ones we looked at are very, uh, encumbered by large forest reserves. So they're a bit easier to regulate. Uh, what I also heard from staff is, do you want us to look at the, how we're allowing, um, photometric studies and fixture height lighting plans for new construction? Do you want us to remove lighting or fixture height standard lighting plans as an option?
Uh, I don't have an answer for you here, I think we can talk about it.
I'm just, for the commission, uh.
Which section?
That, that's, uh, in H2, two and three, that's your plans.
Can I ask this question? What are the businesses, I know you mentioned gas station, but in my mind, the gas station, most gas stations have the roof with the lighting underneath, whereas the car dealerships don't? Is there any, I mean, that's kind of where my head's going, are there other businesses that we feel are going to really trigger this? Because my other question is, do we consult with some of those owners and say, hey, what do you do with some of your other lots that are trying to be compliant? Like, maybe there's something we're not aware of, that they have plans to do, and maybe that's what we should be building in?
So, the, the other one I can tell you of, because they've come to the commission before, are banks, they have security measures, they're tied, I think, to, to the FDIC, I think, or something, uh, for specific, when they're handling money, they have to be lit. So there's one, I believe, Fifth Third, has one on Pasqualelli. They came in for, I believe it was a variance, because they couldn't meet it, because they have the other regulations they had to meet.
And I think that goes to what Commissioner Lynn's saying, is we're, we're kind of protecting homes with the motion coverage, and they're exempt, but again, I, I want there to be good lighting at an ATM, if I'm there at midnight, uh, there's probably not a dark sky person right there in the parking lot. Some of it does seem, failed security measures of a business.
Well, I, I can think of one business that did something recently that wouldn't abide by this. I believe it's the, um, AT&amp;T site, um, that is down on 63rd. So, um, AT&amp;T, um, kind of wrapped up its operations there, and now is subleasing it there, and the new business changed all the lighting on the outside of that building. And it's all trucks and like a gravel lot that's right next to Mariano's. And when I come into the morning, when it's still dark out, it is just broadcasting light everywhere, because their goal was, they needed that yard illuminated. They didn't have existing poles, so they're on the building, which means they're broadcasting out. Chances are, they got a permit for the change out of the light fixtures, but because it was change out of stuff, we didn't ask for photometrics, because we only ask typically for photometrics when it's a new building.
Sure.
And it would be virtually impossible for them to do what they did there. I'm not saying what they did there is right or wrong, but it is pretty, pretty bright.
Yeah, they'd have to install poles, so.
Um, so, just generally, for the sake of time, uh, the, what it sounds like is we're, we're being too restrictive, is what I'm hearing from the commission.
I'm, I'm, I just, I, I think I share, maybe, and I might be wrong, but I, I, I just, I just wonder how some of this to be enforced. Some of it, I feel like is, might be well-intentioned, but I just, I, I, it sounds like it's, we're, it's like a half-baked, a kind of, um, idea or concept, that I, I just don't know how, and I could just imagine there being issues. So, no, I don't, I'm not, I'm not in the building department, so, I mean, I could just not mind about the problems that it causes, but I, uh, I don't know, I, that's all I see, I just see that it looks like it's, um, quite, oh, kind of questionable, or difficult on, on people to kind of do photometrics or different things. I don't know how much it costs to do photometric, like, maybe businesses are willing to, to do that, but, um, anyway, a lot of this stuff, and, and perhaps some of it though, too, is that my own, uh, lack of education in photometric stuff, like, so, maybe, maybe that's part of the reason why I, I, I feel like, uh, less solid about this. I mean, setbacks and things like that, that's easier to kind of, to know, to, to come up with a fine line or rule, but some of this stuff gets into, into things that are, at least, out of, out of my league in some, in some cases.
There are at least standards for how to measure the photometrics from the lot line in here, answering my question about ambient light, how you take two measurements, one with the light fixtures on and one off, and compare them, so you can eliminate the ambient, the amount of ambient light, um, what type of light reader you have to use, it's got to be calibrated annually, so I think that's all in there to reasonably allow a property owner or the village to take measurements and see whether they meet the requirements. I think more, and I think we can address existing nonconforming light fixtures with some language. I think, maybe, is your question more, or is, is this too strict?
Yeah.
I don't know.
I certainly, well, go ahead, no questions.
I certainly don't have the answers, or am I a lighting expert? But, you know, as a village, I think you got to look at, you know, the, uh, choose your hard, you know, is it going to be, we're restrictive and we deal with the complaints, you know, are there going to be more complaints if we, if we are more restrictive, or there going to be more complaints if we ease the restrictions and, you know, have illumination all over the, all over the town? It's probably more the former. But I, I agree, like, I think you have to set some sort of a standard, or else it's going to be manifest destiny out there.
And the standard's actually more relaxed than what it has been.
Scott, you were talking about the height, I think at some point you have to have the height there, and have me come in for a variance. I mean, at some point, you're trying to make the level. And by the way, I'm a huge space nerd, so I know exactly what the dark skies, but even if every light was shut off in the village of Westmont, you still wouldn't be able to see the form of the Milky Way here, like you could in South Dakota. So it's not, it's also being cognizant of where we are. It's not saying, yeah, I understand, like, you know, a drop in the ocean and there's a butterfly effect, but we're not in a rural area, and so as well-intended as this is, I do think that, like Commissioner Donahue said, we're, we're going to have more people having issues with trying to comply. The only other thing I could think of as suggestion is have a transitional thing in between, where if their grandfather did, because it's not practical, there's no way code enforcement's going to say, well, they put this light up on this date and that day. Maybe for the next 10 years, if you're in the old one, we want you to slowly, maybe put a middle option here, slowly get to this, and we'll pre-approve it, but with the goal of trying to aim, you know, trying to get people to somewhat shield it down or get rid of the open view, because it sounds like that's what we're trying to do by setting maximum height, right? The idea is push everything below this limit, so nothing escapes it. I think ultimately, that's what we're trying to do while being fair to existing businesses. I think that's.
Do you want to get to a point of change, or do you want to appease the current business owners for as long as possible, or as long as they're in business?
Right.
You know, two different things.
But, but I think that transitional kind of lets them say, like, hey, long-term, we're going to go into this, so if we do have something with all new lights, let's get ahead of it, but if we've only got one or two, okay, let's try and make it aesthetically look pleasing, and then when it's time, it's time. Yeah, or have them come back in 10 years and let the PCC deal with it then.
What we can do is table the lighting for now, and staff will discuss it with the consultant and see what we can figure out. I do think it's going to result in some of the standards sticking. We do think the current standards are too strict and pretty hard to define, uh, especially with the proposals we get.
I do like your, your question about, should we keep both the prescriptive and performative methods for lighting analysis? I like both of them, I like that they're both in there as options.
Where's that, Tom?
That's, uh, option one and option two on page 11-4. Or 12-4, sorry. Are we good to move on to, I believe it's outdoor storage of junk and debris, uh, which we're not changing, so I don't receive any comments on that in particular? All right. 12.05, site vision triangles, uh, we've implemented some clarity language and new graphics, we had pretty old graphics in the current code. And we are also having some standards, not as, uh, extreme for alleys.
And driveways.
Alleys and driveways.
Do you happen to know if the, the, for the driveway in particular, the 10 by 10 triangle, if the code consultant referenced other villages?
I think we can take a look. I believe so.
So this, this would mean a fence could not go into that triangle?
Correct, yeah. Which generally, um, I think it'd be a solid fence, if any, couldn't go there. Because you can see through the open fencing to a degree. Uh, and the variances we've received for fences in those areas, um, we've, we've always allowed them, but with the stipulation that it's cut off at a certain point. Supposedly to see pedestrians at that point.
I don't like it, but I understand its safety value.
You don't like the, the corners cut?
I don't like the, well, I just like to have plants, you know, like a three-foot shrub on the corner of my driveway and the sidewalk, so it's purely selfish.
You did this in a house you built a block south of here at the alley.
Yeah, right, like, and, and I thought, I thought it came out okay, like, the fence, I thought it looked, so, um, yeah, as Commissioner was saying, that, like, it was just, just one block south of here, I, I had to get, I got a variance for the six-foot fence. I brought, I brought that six-foot fence up to the sidewalk, which I, I have a feeling that in some other codes, you, you can't do that, or something, but I brought it up to the sidewalk, because it was a corner property, and, uh, I think it was then that was mentioned by the then, the then commission to do, to cut the corner like this on the, like, the 10 foot by 10 foot, and I thought, I thought, it, it looks fine, it looks, I think, and then they, even the, the, the homeowners there, they, they planted, I think, a few plants on the outside triangle, like, and so it looks well, like it.
Yeah, I think they have lower planting things there.
Yeah, I think, I think so, yeah, so.
Okay.
Any other comments on that section? We can move on. We're now into the sections related to, um, nonconformities. Uh, this particular section, our, uh, changes are just general changes and clarity changes related to nonconformities. We did have some amendments that were, uh, processed not too long ago related to nonconformities. Those are largely kept and just some clarity items were changed.
Yeah, so this was redrafted in 2023, I believe it was, and went through Planning and Zoning Commission, and the one thing, like, that it didn't address, because it was in another section of the zoning ordinance, was nonconforming lots, so that was added. I know there was a, a few cleanup and clarity things, but otherwise, this is all pretty, pretty new language overall, newly approved language.
Do we have any specific questions on the nonconformities? A lot of legalese. Uh, we also moved in the nonconforming signs, like I mentioned prior, into this section, so they're all together with the other nonconforming items.
They don't have anything in this section?
The only thought I had, is there anything in here about, do you have to do a sprinkler system in a house that gets a certain percent renovated?
Uh, that's not located in the zoning code, those provisions are in the, I think, fire or building codes.
Okay, no reason.
Scott, an expansion of a nonconforming use? I saw that you struck the prohibition, so I'm guessing so that you have the ability to allow a nonconforming to expand?
Uh, I believe so.
If they disagree, if you were to say, no, they can't expand it, they retain the ability then to come in front of PCC on an overturn?
Yeah, everybody has the ability to come in for an appeal to an administrative decision.
Okay.
Sometimes it comes up in plans where, um, say a house is over a side yard, existing houses over side yard setback, uh, they want to go up to, like, they want to put a second floor addition. Some towns say it's okay to go straight up, I think in Western Springs you can, but say in other towns, you can't, like, because that's considered, uh, going further encroachment into the nonconformity, as, uh, how, is that in this section?
Uh, it's actually, that particular item is listed in the bulk table, um, and it's, it's a note that says you can go up.
Okay.
Or you can go out in other directions.
Correct.
So, for example, let's say there's a, a, a front yard setback violation with an existing house, so it's nonconforming, um, but you can expand that structure to the rear, as long as you're complying with the other setback regulations and bulk regulations, as long as you're not increasing the front yard setback encroachment.
Can you go up, so that, that the second floor is still beyond the front yard setback?
Yes.
You can?
Yeah, and, and, and the note in the residential table, it allows it. We currently allow it in our, in our code.
And then, say for the, if it's beyond the side yard setback, can, if the person wants to do a rear addition, can they continue going straight back, or no?
No.
No.
So they can't make the condition worse?
Correct.
Correct.
But, like, I mean, I could imagine someone, I'm glad anyway that you could still go straight up, though, because I could, some, some people would see that as being almost the same, whether you go straight back or you go on up, either one of them is, uh, for, for, like, continuing a nonconformity, but, but it's okay to go up, though, right?
Yes. And that's not a change, that's currently in our code as well.
That's fine, I'm happy with it, thank you.
Any other questions, comments on this section? Okay, well, we can move on, I think.
Hello, Scott, it's 9:07, how, how far do you want to go?
I would prefer to get through this, so we can start revising language if the commission feels, let's do it.
Let's give it a shot.
And we only have, I think it's three more, and mostly measurements and definitions is the bulk of it.
All right.
So Article 14 is review and approval procedures. We have some significant changes in this section that we've gone through multiple times, so I'll try not to repeat myself too much. So we have changes, uh, related to planned unit developments and development plans. This is a new item, uh, where we're having development plans instituted, along with site plan approvals. Uh, we have also, um, removed zoning certificates and certificates of occupancy from the zoning code specifically. We rarely use those anyway, um, and they're more geared towards building occupancy. With, uh, the changes, we also made changes to, uh, site plan approvals. Uh, we have categorized them into major administrative site plan approvals, uh, related to specific conditions, um, on what is being proposed, so, uh, the, the most notable is any building that is more than 10,000 square feet in floor area. Uh, those site plans and landscape plans have to come to this commission, the village board, to be approved. Others, uh, there's some. Others, there's some other ones in there as well that have to come here. Others can be, uh, approved administratively and do not have to come to this commission or village board for an approval. That's more in line with a lot of other communities in this area. The other option is that, um, staff has the ability for any site plan to suggest and require it to come to the commission or village board for approval, if staff does not feel it's comfortable or war, or if something's warranted to be discussed at this level. We've also have categorized site plan amendments into major and minor amendments with separate approval processes. Most of the other items like variances, special uses, rezonings, appeals, haven't changed. So they still follow the same normal process as required. What I will add is, uh, within our planned unit development items, we are proposing some additional changes that will, uh, be in the revised language once we come back with it. Go ahead.
You just remind me, say, if a person does an addition to, and this is, when you said site plan, pardon?
Going back to what you were.
Maybe, uh, is civil engineering drawings required for additions of a certain size? Like, sometimes?
I think that's largely a permit item. We don't require civil for largely anything zoning related.
But it's not zoning?
Yeah.
Sorry, all right, thank you.
We're sticking to all of fourteen oh one, not just the one section, right?
Yeah, we'll, we'll just go through fourteen, because there's only two major changes, so.
The only question I have for you, because I was trying to find it, fourteen oh one, section two, applicability, it, it kind of jumps around, so I know I'm going a little ahead. Is there a table, or can we put a table in of when a pre-application is required? So like the same way you did here of, you know, checking the box, when it's staff, when it's PZC?
Can you repeat the, where that's located, sorry?
Yeah, so we're.
Fourteen point oh two?
Fourteen, sorry, fourteen point oh one, but it's section, uh, C two.
Got it.
Sorry, it gets a little.
Uh, so you want us to put infographic?
Yeah, I think you do, I think you do a table, I think that's really simple to solve it. I know a couple of com, or one, at least one of the comments, it's correct. And I could figure it out, but I'm turned in it. And if we're business friendly, just put it in there, this is when it's required, this is when it's recommended. And then I think it's that much simpler for people to not have to hire a zoning attorney to do simple things.
Yeah, we can do that.
So, so right now, that section B says, pre-application meetings are required whenever the code says they're required. And maybe replace that with a little chart that says?
Take, take this, yeah, take the same thing of, so planning and development, I presume they need to do a pre-app, right? But a variance, do they have to do it for a variance?
So we're getting into, it's difficult because of changes in the village. We were at CDC looking at instituting a technical review committee, which would take the place of a pre-application meeting. Some of this language is vague on purpose, because we don't know what some of the changes might be related to committees and commissions in the village. So.
Got it. I'm, I'm happy making it not like foregoing that.
We will, I'll look into it to see if it's feasible.
I think this is so easy to read on fourteen oh one B, that if we do the same thing, you don't, they don't have to even look through the code, it's very clear, it makes sense.
So I agree.
Hannah Fine told me, pointed out to me about, that the last comment I made, I made about the, can you, can you build vertically even if the, if you're beyond the side yard setback? It's actually, you know, it's in thirteen point oh four, non-conforming structures. It's in part C where it says, it actually says that if you're beyond the, only if it's, if you're beyond the front yard setback and you go up vertically, but if it's.
I thought you were mentioning side, side yard adjoining a street.
Sorry?
So I thought you were talking about a side yard adjoining a street, if it's a corner.
No, not, not, not the corner side.
So you're just talking about the side?
Yeah, interior side yard setback. Yeah, I was wondering if you could go straight up. But, uh, but according to this, no, you can't, right?
I think you can based on the non-conformity section.
It, it only mentions front.
Right.
Are, are you looking at the non-conformity section or the table?
I'm looking at the non-conformity section, I couldn't find it in the table, so.
And I had been moved to the non-conformity section.
So, but, but I believe this was the intent of the original code, which is that allowing someone to build a second story and utilizing their front yard non-conforming setback tends to have very little effect on your neighbors. But I've got houses that are three feet away from their neighbor's property line and letting them by right build up. I think that's what we were trying to avoid.
I think we were trying to allow it for side yard adjoining, for the corner properties.
Joining a street.
Uh, joining a street.
Oh, yeah.
We would allow it that.
But we, we, we treat like the front.
Like a frontage.
That's what I meant, I'm sorry, I misconstrued.
So the, the reason why we have reservations about allowing it on just a side yard setback is that it's not giving the neighbor a lot of, um, ability to say, well, your, your house has always been too close to mine, and now the village is letting you go up two more stories, you know, or whatever, so.
Yeah, I guess put a bit of a break, that is, is the fact that you're going from six-foot side yard setbacks to five, so that, that could help, that, um, okay.
Don't have to come back if you're expanding.
Yeah, I, I could imagine not to go less than five, because the, I think the fire department doesn't like being less than five.
Yes.
Sorry, guys.
I'm glad we clarified. So going through the approval process items. We were back on, I think Commissioner Simpson wanted that table added to the applicability or pre-application. Do you have any other comments going through this section?
I've got one on, I, um, well, I just have a generic comment that I wrote next to E, because it was, it's not actually anywhere in this section about time, like, specific timelines. And I'm assuming that's because the village wants to have flexibility with how long and when, when somebody submits something in a month and what specific planning and zoning meeting they'll get to make and village board meeting, all that, makes sense not to have in here. But just, I'm gonna, I'm gonna advocate to get the, this commission some, I want to discuss, how can we get this commission packages sooner than the Friday before? I say that because sometimes I'm, I'm often gone on the weekends, I don't get back till Monday night, and I have four kids, and it's hard to, it's hard to digest especially large packages before Wednesday night and do my due diligence. So we can like table that comment, because it's not about this, but it's close. It's about process, so I thought I'd advocate for it.
What I will mention is, I believe administration, uh, is choosing to, for their village board meetings, to get the packets earlier. Now ours are still earlier than theirs, I think.
Scott, part of the difficulty is, once it gets published, that, you gotta wait till it is, right?
So, a lot of the requests are tied to noticing requirements. We have to publish in the paper, send mailings out, and right now the staff does all of that on our end. And then there's a timeframe, basically, once we get the notice out, then we start working on the staff report and their items. We don't allow any notices to go out until we receive all the required items for them to move to a public hearing.
But is, is there language, like, when you, when a, when an applicant calls and says, I have a project, when do I need to get it into you by to see, to be on the August meeting?
So what, what we have is in our application, we have timetables that are tentative, because meetings get canceled. Sometimes they don't give us everything we need in time, and so we, they give us an application that's not complete. But we do give them some frame of reference of, if you get it to us on this deadline date, you're at the earliest able to go on this planning and zoning commission meeting. And if you go on that planning and zoning commission, earliest village board meeting you get on is in a week or two after that. So, we do provide the information, that's why the pre-application meeting is important for them, because we need to know their timeline and if it's feasible, so.
But many times submittals are incomplete, or there's extensive review comments and plans have to be reviewed before community development department finds them acceptable to even think about publishing legal notice. So one project could move very quickly, and a very similar project could take three times as long just because they're, the applicant's not good about submitting documents.
We, we've had an application just last year that took almost exactly a year to get to a planning and zoning meeting, because they were mulling things over on how to approach a rezoning, so.
Once we go paperless with that.
Uh, I will mention, this is, we're getting off topic, and I do want to stay on topic.
Okay.
Because we don't have a lot to get through.
That's fine.
We have no, we haven't made any decisions yet on going paperless yet.
Okay.
Scott, the only thing, the only other item that note that I have on this is just, are we trying to get away? So I'm gonna make your life more difficult, and it's not intentional. But most people don't know the process, right? The businesses who hire the zoning attorneys, they're covered, they're fine. But the most mom and pops, or even residential, when they're doing a variance, when they're doing something, they don't know publication, they don't know getting their neighbors. What I'd like to make sure of is that we're not putting it necessarily only on the applicant. I do think that the time for the, the village expend and resources should be compensated or built into an optional fee, so that me as the applicant, I have the option of doing the publication, doing the posting, uh, doing notifying the neighbors, or I can pay the village an additional fee, which includes the cost of mailing, the time it takes to research on, you know, DuPage GIS, mapping out the two fifty feet, because some of the commissioners might not even know what I'm talking about, but.
So.
We can do it faster, more efficient, and ensure that the residents actually have notice. Whereas maybe if they're putting out the sign, it's conveniently in the worst lit spot, or, you know.
A lot of that deals with process internal and several, it's changed throughout the years on how we've required either an applicant to do the mailings or noticing. If we do it, it's gone back and forth. With the way it's written now, uh, it's a little vague on purpose, because we want the ability to, if a resident's coming in for a variance who doesn't know the whole procedure, we want to be able to do it for them. If a large development's coming in that has a whole legal team, we will place the onus on them to get their mailings out. It has also to do with liability. So if, if we're the ones noticing, and we don't notice the correct amount of people, then the village is liable for, for not doing so. We'd rather not have that place.
And liable just means that a project that got approved, for example, it can be overturned that, that approval, and they'd have to start over again.
So we're not worried if it happens to the neighbors in the residential area, because it's not impacting as many people as per se a PUD.
And there is something we do that, this is the only community I've ever worked in that we do. We don't require certified mailings. We have them provide us with the self-addressed stamped envelopes, or we produce it ourselves. And since we're mailing it out, it doesn't have to go out in certified mail, so we are trying to be.
That to me is more business friendly, because they don't know this.
But as Scott was saying, when it's a big corporate entity and it's a high-profile project, I remember the last, the first time that Hilton went through back in twenty sixteen, the zip codes for everyone that lived in those townhouses right by the hotel were the wrong zip codes, and they all bounced back. And the entire meeting needed to be postponed, and luckily that was on them, that was not on us, so. I just want to point out to everyone that, you know, uh, we did see some comments from an attorney that said that everything we're doing here is not necessarily business friendly. Administrative approvals is a big thing for us, we've never had administrative approvals. So at the last planning and zoning meeting, we had a, a generator, because we have no administrative approval process for something simple. So we have to string them through both planning and zoning and village board. This is written in a way that you can build a 10,000-square-foot building. And as long as you meet all of the setbacks, landscape, parking, you don't have to come through any of this. So is that business friendly? Absolutely. It's, it's a short review period, um, and you're in permits. And the idea is, is that if you abide by all the codes, both planning and zoning, the board trusts staff to make sure that everything is there, so that the, this commission is not just here to give a rubber stamp of, yeah, thanks for showing us that you did it all properly. That is a big deal in terms of being business friendly. So just the administrative approval process that we have. But it also means that the board, and I talked to the board at the CDC about this, is, means that you're, potentially a new building can come out of the ground and the board did not, was not fully vetted in what was coming out of the ground. So, but that, that is a big deal. And very progressive the way we're moving with it, so. Now be quiet.
Any other items related to processes? No, not seeing any?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Like, actually, this, this might be another building department one, so, but, uh, just that, I, I just know that like, um, when a, when a person comes to build a house, that they can't submit for permit unless they had all the paperwork, like, from all, all the plumbers, all the, like, the civil drawings, architectural drawings. Whereas I think in other, other villages, you could not have something, and it's only, then you provide it, like, just before picking up permit.
So for, for permits, different process, zoning's out.
It's not the.
Not part of zoning. I will say for our submittals for planning and zoning application, for example, we take in the documents they give us, we basically have, until the following Monday, they submit, deadline's on Friday, we have a following Monday, we look them over. And then if they're missing stuff, we will reject it until they get us that, because we don't want to take in the money, because our fees are non-refundable. So we don't want to take in the money if they're not gonna have everything they need. Uh, any, anything else on this section? All right, I will move on. See, I believe the next section is measure, or is it administrative enforcement?
Yeah.
Administration and enforcement. With this section, uh, we just provided clarification on the roles and responsibilities of the zoning administrator. We added, basically, the community development director is the zoning administrator, but he has authority to delegate those, uh, powers to somebody else, just similar to other positions within the department. We also, uh, restated and updated enforcement processes, including violation remedies and penalties to provide better transparency to the public. Any questions or comments on administration? Not seeing any. Any comments or questions on enforcement?
Daniels really seemed vehement against the idea of the zoning administrator withholding permits or forms of authorization on other land owned by, uh, owner in violation of one property. So I get to, to John, I would ask, is this standard?
I can yield at least two things. The first is Kirk's language here, our consultant, is what he does for a lot of villages. He kind of transplanted a lot of it. The second is, I know this is reviewed by, uh, the building official of the code enforcement, building commissioner, but I will allow the attorneys to speak.
I believe I raised the same question. First of all, it's. First of all, it's discretionary. Two, I think there's the issue, if you have a chronic violator on one property and they're looking to establish a similar use on another property and you fear that they're going to be a chronic violator, it's like, get your house in order first before we're going to start processing your permits. I know it's an unrelated, it's a different piece of land. But I think we'd have to look and see, all right, is it the same type of building or use that you're proposing for which you're seeking a permit as what currently exists that you can't keep in good order? I think it'd probably be rare that that would be invoked, but there might be those extreme situations where you go into it.
I think it makes, I mean, what you described makes sense to me.
He also mentioned, I challenge anyone to come up with the scenario. So I've got the scenario because I'm dealing with it in a scenario, in a circumstance where if you have someone who's utilizing a property but doesn't meet that use requirement, right? So the use isn't permitted for whatever reason it is, and they come in for building permits, they shouldn't be allowed to get those permits because the use is not allowed. So this would stop them effectively also. You have the discretion to say, no, we're not granting the permit until you resolve your underlying cases. So that's just one circumstance since I guess no one thought it could occur. But in Chicago, at least, I don't know if it's same, they call them scofflaws, I think. I hope that's not a bad word. But it's the scofflaw list, usually when you have landlords, usually it was residential, if they're not taking care of it. I mean, it wouldn't apply since we're not home rule. But usually the idea is if you are turning a blind eye and everything's wrong, yeah, it's a different LLC, but the beneficial interest, if it keeps ending up the same person.
It's not unlike other ordinances where if someone comes in for business registration, but they haven't been able, they haven't paid their taxes owed to the village, or they haven't complied with other village ordinances, we'd have the right to say, no. Even though the business registration has nothing to do with taxes, same with liquor licenses. You know, there's many situations like that where you can hold someone accountable.
And you could put liens on.
That's if there's like a judgment order and fines that are unpaid.
Any other questions, comments on that section? We can move on to measurements. So measurement section is largely new to us. We don't have a measurement section in our current code. Usually the measurements are divided into the other sections and explained narratively. We don't have infographics. So a lot of this is brand new or transplanted in from other sections that we currently have existed. That's about it for my explanation. Do we have any issues with the measurements or definitions of the measurements?
I have a question on.
Number four, you're on page 16-5.
Yes.
Right in the middle or top.
Well, basically, all of these. So what you're saying is they're not going to follow the required setback in that zoning district? That it's going to be an average?
So what it is, is this relates, this is relates to contextual setbacks. So we're putting a provisions where, right now, we do have some contextual setback provisions related to front property lines in the R3 district. It's up to 25 feet. They can meet the neighbor up to 25 feet from the front property line. We did ask the consultant to look into contextual setbacks. So we have a lot of properties, especially in the downtown areas, where they're kind of mishmashed on where they sit in front of the property because they're a lot older, non-conforming properties. So these provisions give insight into contextual setbacks specific to how they're measured depending on the situation.
They're even measured if it is a non-conforming?
Correct. That is part of the contextual setbacks. So we've seen in other communities where you take the average of the two properties next to you and that's what we're trying to implement to a degree in here.
It's an either/or type of situation, right? That you could either follow what the setback, front setback is, or you could choose to do the contextual, right?
Yes. In certain circumstances where contextual is allowed.
Can you remind us what, if you know, off the top of your head, what those?
I'd have to go all the way back. I don't remember off the top of my head.
I mean, is it, but it's not just any, it's not as broad as any detached, single-family home would choose either or something more specific.
Scott, the goal is if it's non-conforming, right? So like the downtown area, how we're trying to get everyone closest to the sidewalk and we got a couple that are further back, right? But if there's a vacant lot in the middle, basically, we're allowing them to.
I believe.
Subback to try and bridge it. Is that the goal?
I believe the provisions are related to residential districts only.
Yes, it is residential.
I just can't find exactly where that's.
I thought for your R3, I thought your front setback was 35 feet.
So it's in the residential table, number note four. It's just states, see also contextual average setback provisions of 16.07.
What page is that?
Which is that? That's on page 2-3. And that relates to detached houses generally. So if we want to put guardrails on it, this would be the time.
So in an R3, if the setback is, what is it now, 45?
For the R3, it's 35.
35? So there could be cases in the R3 where the house might be 20 feet to 40?
Right now, we have provisions in the code that allow up to 25 feet for the R3 district. So if your neighbor adjacent, one adjacent property owner is closer or up to 25 feet, your property can go up to 25 feet, your house can.
That's what's in our current code?
So is actually that, does that state that 25 feet? So do we have three different things? We have a 35-foot setback, a contextual setback, or?
So the, in the current code, we just have the 35 and the 25, which is somewhat of contextual setback.
Right.
Because it's dependent on your adjacent property owners, or adjacent properties in the houses.
But are we, are we dropping that 25?
Dropping the 25.
For contextual?
For contextual. And the contextual setbacks in that section give the examples of when and how to measure where basically your neighbors are at a certain setback, how your property would measure depending on those setbacks.
So, sorry, just to.
Mr. Peterson?
Commissioner Peterson? No, just in regards to contextual setbacks, just if, the staff could probably explain better than me. But if you're just curious, because contextual setbacks just kind of creates more of an average-ish look to a street, to a street frontage. That sometime, like in the city of Chicago, it's almost all contextual. Where your house, because the setbacks are kind of crazy in a lot of old properties. So what they, what they, they have the same type of rule, two houses, the average of two houses on either side kind of taken together, that's how it is in, say, the city of Chicago. And I think that that's all they go by without an, one or the other. That's just trying to give some sort of harmony to all the different set, front setbacks on, on the existing properties. So it might seem kind of strange, like, because I thought for a second that you were in disagreement with it. But it is trying to create a bit of a visual harmony across an average of properties on the street. In Clarendon Hills, they, they do it by a whole block average, not just, not just two properties on one side, two properties on the other. They want the whole block, which, which is, I find very cumbersome because then every property owner has to find, has to get a surveyor to find out what the setbacks are for the whole, the whole block. And I've called the village, asking if the village knows what the average is and they don't know. They want, they put it on the homeowner to try to figure it out. So, but it's nice that there's a either/or, as I've mentioned to Scott, which is that you could, that you could either follow by the setback of either 25, or sorry, 35-foot or the contextual setback. The, I do have disagreements now with it. So even though I sound like I'm a proponent of the contextual setbacks, I do have some disagreements with it. One is that the, Westmont has a number of homes that are way at the back of the property line, up against the alley, that then really just skews, like, that wouldn't be an option, that they'll have to just go by the 35-foot setback. And for the downtown district, I kind of think 35 is pretty far. The, I, I do, do many, I know the R3 district is everywhere, not just in the downtown areas. But do a lot of the houses, because I know I didn't follow, my next door neighbor, for my home, which I built in 2016, that's 2017, my next door neighbor was closer than 35 feet and so now I was able to come up as up to 25 feet, which was, which was nice. I don't think I even took it to the full 25 feet. But do a lot of properties in the downtown areas, do they, do they stay by 35 feet? Or almost all of them in the downtown areas closer to like 35 feet or 25 feet?
Without having a, you know, survey.
Sure.
Of all the properties. Permit-wise, more often than not, they're either at 25 or closer.
Right.
In the downtown areas. Other subdivisions have hit or misses. So Oakwood, for example, a lot of them can go up, are at 25 as well because of one that was subdivided. They have subdivision lines and they're plat. And then we have other ones on the south end, some of the older property, or older properties that were with the county that are more estate-esque lots, those go way back. They're at 50 to 40 feet back.
Is that all R3 then? Oakwood?
Oakwood is, the downtown area is, and then.
The estate?
It's a mix on the, on the south end of town.
When you say the south, you mean, but what about the north? I thought that's what you were referring to with the estate.
No, I'm referring to the ones north or southeast corner of the village. A lot of those that are R1, some are, they usually go to rezone to R3, but they're kind of scattered in that corner. That's where all the green is.
Yeah. How about behind the library?
I don't know off the top of my head. A lot of the ones on, I can't remember the name, but it starts with a W. Some of those roads that cut through from Cass near the library, those were developed with very small lots. I think it's called Willard or something.
Well, that used to be county.
Yeah, a lot of them were county and they came in like that. So it's kind of mismatched.
I think generally up there, it's R3.
The other thought is, sorry, the other thought is when we have other annexations coming in, we have a large development in Liberty Park, which almost every house is very, very close to the property lines on the front end. And it's to accommodate those as well.
So I'm kind of okay with the contextual setbacks. I'm definitely happy that there's an either/or, that you could just do a solid number and you don't have to get a surveyor, you don't have to figure out what your neighbor's is. But, but I'm still kind of in disagreement with the 35 feet that, and maybe another thing, I might as well throw in as a criticism, is just, the R3 is just everywhere and there's all sorts of different sized lots for R3. So the downtown lots are R3, those large ones behind the library are, those are at 300 feet deep. Those are R3 then too. So like, they're, they're very kind of different nature in some ways and they're, they're all R3. So, like, anyway, I'm just pointing out that I kind of think the 30, in some parts of the town, 35 feet, like, is not going to go for it. And I guess they'll go, they'll opt then for the contextual setbacks, but that will be unlucky for the guy that lives next door to one of those houses that's back at the alley. Which I feel like every other block has, has one like that.
Yeah, what I think the goal is, is to accommodate the scenarios where we've seen it. I'm not necessarily thinking it's going to be perfect in every situation, but it's to provide an option.
If there's a vacant lot, there's a default number for, right? If it's a vacant lot, then you.
Yes, I believe for a vacant lot, it's just the assumed is the required setback.
Of 35.
35.
Can you apply that then to houses that are at the, at the very back of the lot? Because those are like, say, 50, 60 feet setback on those houses, I almost think that those should be dismissed.
So what you're saying is if, if a house sits past 35 feet, we would.
Maybe.
Just assume that's at 35?
Yeah, I'm trying to, I'm trying to give it a little bit more.
And then you would average it with the neighboring house adjacent that is closer?
The other, the other two pair, the two on the one side and the other. At least one of those houses is going to be at the alley. Or at least from driving around, there's, I feel like every block, there's one house that's all the way back at the alley. So do you guys, are you familiar what I'm talking about when I say a house back at the alley? Yeah, so. I must, I feel like those shouldn't be counted. Because then they'll just, that just skews your contextual setback intent.
Yeah, I mean, we can look at doing that if the commission agrees.
I think that makes sense to me.
Yeah, just ignore the ones that are deep.
Or treat them like vacant lots.
I think that's all that needs to happen is we've got the provision in here for the vacant lots. It's all you have to do is say that anything that's further than the 35 can be considered at the 35.
I have a question on houses that are much closer. Like, let's say they're 15 feet front setback and there's a vacant lot next to them. That 15 feet allows them to be, to build a new house much closer to that setback. And the original house that was way too close gets demolished and it gets rebuilt and now it can be closer still. So the trend over time will be that houses get closer and closer to the street is how this math will work over time. And are we comfortable with that? Or do we want to instigate a minimum required?
I think that's the general question, if the commission wants to.
So that's, that's, I kind of wanted to just give a real simple example. So if, I know it's an average of the two houses on each side, but let's just take one. So if there's, trying to think that up here on Grant, maybe at Norfolk, there's a house that's right on the corner. Like, it's probably got a zero lot line setback on both, both the side yard adjoining the street and the front. So if I had something that was only setback five feet and the one on the other side of my lot was at 10 feet, then technically I could build it seven and a half feet. Whereas the current code would say, well, we'll let you be closer than 35, but we'll only let you be as close as 25. So I understand what the contextual is trying to do. And so you get an even kind of curvature of the fronts of homes versus one that's here and then one that's here. And I see that a lot when I drive up Lincoln in that direction. You can always tell the newer houses that were built because you could see they're so much farther back. And then that contributes to the lot coverage because they need bigger driveways in order to service their garages. So I think that question is, we're removing that 25-foot. What, if we want to set a number, is the comfort level? I mean, the occurrence of a seven and a half-foot setback is probably so rare that it would never really happen. But right now, there is no minimum that is established there. And should there be a minimum and then what should that be?
Personally, I don't, I don't like this at all. I think everything should be built according to the zoning district. Who is to say that all the houses in a row looks good compared to, you know, ones that are like this? I think it's just aesthetically, it's each individual person's, the way they, you know. Personally, I kind of, what I like about Westmont is because everything's so different. I mean, I don't think I would want to drive down the streets and see every single house, you know, every single block, all the houses lined up. But ever, obviously, everyone has different, different opinions.
Well, if we keep the, if we use just the zoning district underlying, the thought would be that at some point, all of them would be lined up.
Right, down, down the road.
Yeah. The other way around it is if we do the contextual setbacks, you'll see more variety, but there will be a general continuation of a line. will be a general continuation of a line.
All right, but she's saying, who cares? Maybe, maybe a straight line's not important.
That's everybody.
Yeah, I mean, if it, that, that again is like, if we, if we're to stick to just the thirty-five feet, which is what, what, if it's not the contextual setbacks, then it's the thirty-five feet number, right? But if a fall new construction in the downtown district area had to be thirty-five feet, then that's going to be ten, that could be ten feet further back than most of its neighbors.
Here's one, one of the problems with strictly enforcing a, let's say a thirty-five foot front yard setback in residential districts, is that you're going to get a host of variance requests.
Right.
To build closer than that and they're going to point to their neighbors next to them and across the street and we've seen that. And so the code was amended to allow this kind of contextual setback. So you're more or less matching up with what your neighbors are doing and it's resulted in much less aggravation in costs for homeowners who want to build a new house. So it makes sense and I understand what you're saying, but I think that was part of the rationale is we keep processing these stupid front yard setback variances and everyone that's reasonable is getting approved. So why not change the rules to make it more accommodating?
And people do tend to want their houses close to the front so that they can have more usable private rear yard. So that's why, why people come with variances to get as close as they can to the street so they can have a backyard that's a little bit bigger.
Sorry, I could jump on that if you.
Just, just real quick, Jill, I know you're, you've got some hesitations about that. Does anyone else, because I think probably you should get to a point where if it's not a, it's a majority rule thing eventually.
And that's fine.
And appreciate the comments, but maybe we should.
Yeah, I guess.
Let's move on.
A straw pool bowl just for, oh, the contextual setbacks.
I think I'm the only one who doesn't like it.
I like it, yeah. Nobody else?
Yeah, I like it, but I.
I think it's a good option.
Okay. The second thing I'm going to ask is, do we want to put guardrails on the setback? So putting a minimum, as Sharke recommended, or a maximum? Minimum?
Well, what I was suggesting, what I was suggesting was kind of like a maximum, but as far as not, not counting the guy, the person's house at the very back.
I think that should, I agree with that. And I also agree though with the minimum.
What's, what do you, what's your comfort level for what that should be?
Oh, that's, I hope you weren't asking.
I don't, I don't think.
Fifteen feet at a, at an absolute minimum.
Well, so I asked this question before we landed on that number. I believe we're talking about the front of the house, but you can always still then have an eight foot front porch encroachment. So if you say fifteen, you can have an eight foot porch encroachment.
Yeah, I guess I mean.
So I just want to make sure, so we're really talking about seven potentially when we say fifteen? Is that my math right? Okay.
I know, I'm thinking, I'm thinking whatever the built, so at the bottom of the step, that's what I was considering. I would be.
So I, I believe what you're saying, fifteen including any permitted encroachments.
Like fifteen plus. Fifteen feet to the encroachment.
Yeah, to the encroachment.
And currently it's twenty-five feet.
Currently it is twenty-five feet, but we count the front porch. The porch is not a permitted encroachment on top of that. So right now, it's a, it's a full twenty-five feet, you can't build anything.
And that was to maintain some level of streetscape?
That was to maintain the streetscape and we talked about variances, we had a lot of variances coming through. And typically when you can point to your neighbors and say, I'm not setting precedent, I'm not adversely affecting the, the character of the neighborhood, that's why those variances were typically getting approved because as long as you could show you fit the neighborhood.
No, I understand the reason.
And at, at the time, we were only comfortable coming up ten feet.
So if it's, if it's say the fifteen feet plus the eight feet of the porch, then we're, we're pretty close to, we're almost back to the twenty-five feet.
We're two feet apart.
So we'll just.
Wait, so do we want to keep the twenty-five feet provision for the minimum?
For a minimum? That, that's what I'm thinking. I don't know if you, how do you feel?
No, my, Commissioner Sharpe, now that we've addressed that, does the two feet matter? Are you kind of now?
No, no, no.
Now that it means the eight feet part, it's kind of the same.
No, I just, no, I just think it should be acknowledged here in these diagrams. You know, that there is a, there is still a minimum, even if you choose this route.
We can implement that, I have no issue.
Either in the text of the, you know, the language or.
We'll likely put it in both, in the note and, just so it's shown directly in the table. Okay. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
No.
I still feel like thirty-five feet is too much for the normal setback.
Just to acknowledge Commissioner Lynn, I think when the comp plan comes forward, because what you're kind of proposing is that maybe there should be a different R district for the downtown.
Or, or some differentiation, yeah.
So, so that would be a comp plan discussion. So I encourage you to, to speak up about that during the comp plan.
Okay, thank you.
Any other items for measurements?
Scott?
It's all of sixteen. Yes, it's all sixteen.
Scott, sorry to mention this again, was the, about the side yard setback and if you could go up, that, that question, if you could do a second floor addition, if you're, if you're beyond, if you're encroaching on a side yard setback, I brought this up about probably an hour ago now, but like, just, and, and I was given a very good answer, but then I kind of thought like if it was down to a minimum of five feet, then, that you can't go closer than five feet to property line. There might be some properties, like in the estate-ish ones, that, that might have much bigger side yard setbacks, so I'm just guessing, would they have like say ten foot side yard setbacks? That'd be nice to kind of go vertically above those because I, but here, we could, I could email you if you want, because it's getting late.
Well, I, I understand what you're trying to say. I don't think because of how those districts were created for those ten foot setbacks, I don't, I don't know if there's even a circumstance where there is an non-conformity for some of those properties where that would be needed.
True.
So, and I just want to emphasize that there's still the variance option for that.
Sure.
So I, I want to make sure that we're designing this code for the majority of stuff that we're comfortable with, not, you know, a few of the anomalies.
Unique situation is what that would be.
Yeah, okay. I have one small comment on the very last paragraph of the article exemptions, talking about how you can add, this is on page sixteen dash eleven, how you can add equipment, chimneys, water tanks, stuff like that on top of a roof above the height limit for the district, but they must be located or screened by parapet walls, has to conceal their view when viewed from the adjoining street. Else, in the, in the bulk standards, we limit parapet height walls, I think to six feet, something like that. It's too short to, to obscure a lot of stuff that would go on, like for example, multifamily apartment building or an office building would need something higher and they're probably going to set it back from the, parapets also along the facade.
Yeah.
So we just need to change this to screen walls or parapets.
Yeah, I can.
To allow them to screen it, you know?
That's an existing paragraph in our current code for exemption.
One more to go.
One more. Anything else for measurements? We go to definitions? All right.
Where are we?
We're, we're going to definitions.
Oh, okay.
So chap, Article seventeen is all about definitions. Not everything is explicitly defined here. It's not meant to be all encompassing of every single word that is in the zoning ordinance. It's specific to items that other places in municipalities have different definitions for than we do when we're talking about items in the zoning code. So what you'll see not in the definitions are definitions of uses. Those are in the use categories in a separate section and they have characteristics and general outlines for what that use is. So you won't see specific uses listed out in the definitions.
So like bedroom was taken out of the definition too? Was it because of?
Yeah, bedrooms, the reason it was taken out is because usually building codes govern what a bedroom is.
Okay.
We also have a housing code that defines it, or at least has requirement, minimum size, I think, and other requirements for bedrooms.
Okay.
And what constitutes a bedroom.
We also don't use density to determine, we don't use bedrooms to determine density anymore.
Okay. And is that the, the family was taken out?
Family's taken out, the general industry doesn't use family anymore. That's why you'll see it's a multifamily, it's multi-unit. So you, we don't want to use family anymore because every place has different definition for what a family is.
Okay. Got it.
I, I still think we were using the diameter, breast height definition through here, but I think it's meant to be eliminated.
You mean, sorry?
The page seventeen dash six.
Which one, Tom?
Just in the definition.
The D V H diagram and the definition on the previous page.
Oh.
We had talked about, when we were talking about donation drop boxes of possibly instituting a size, a maximum size or a minimum size where the zoning ordinance takes effect. So I hope that would be kept with the accessory use discussion or if it would be criticized.
It'll likely stay with accessory use since we listed out specifically, this is just general.
Okay.
Any other comments or notes on definitions?
Uh, yeah. We have, it's probably inherent, just not seeing it, the use category for community residence comma family and community residence comma group in the residential districts, those are, you know, allowable uses. I'm trying to, maybe we define those in Article six?
I think so. I just can't remember off the top of my head.
Oh, yeah, we, group living.
Residential recreation, no, not sure.
Community residence, I don't know, I have to look at that, but I thought there was a definition.
Yeah.
In the old, current zoning ordinance?
Yeah.
And I don't see it in here like stricken out?
I'll note it and come back for the staff.
And then it looks like the definition of trailer is not, must be an existing definition. It is.
I believe so. It might not be in the definitions in the existing code, it might be a different area of the code, I just can't remember off the top of my head.
I don't like the definition. I actually just sent you earlier in the meeting, I sent you an email about it, but you were talking about trailer parking regulations and perhaps addressing those. And the way we define trailer is not how I think of a trailer, which is something that's towed behind a vehicle that stores merchandise or goods or products or something. This defines it as, you know, a trailer that allows, is used for lodging or dwelling purposes or is used as an accessory building or structure in the conduct of business, trade or occupation. And I don't even think we'd allow a trailer as an accessory building.
I think that's related to construction trailers for some of that, but I don't know what the other stuff is.
Yeah.
Food trailers too.
Yep.
Food trucks, but that's not even regulated in the zoning ordinance.
Like the Zazo trailer that they bring when they're over there at Ty Warner, I would think falls into that. I don't know if that's intentional, but that's what I'm, that's what comes to head when I see that.
I don't make any sense, I think this is.
You're talking about making sure the tractor trailer, the trailer that goes on semi-trucks that get propelled, you, there's no definition for that?
No, I, I'm worried that, I had a conversation with Scott today about wanting to regulate vehicles, or I'm sorry, businesses that have, like Uncle Bob's has trailers that they use for their business. Other businesses do as well and they want to park them. And we may not have regulations for that when they're allowed, when they're not allowed. Other businesses have trailers and they just sit on their property permanently and they use them for storage. But when you look at the definition of trailer, I don't think it necessarily covers the trailers that we were talking about and.
That was one of the things that needs to be reworked and regulations related to it.
Yeah, so just pointing out, we should look at the definition of trailer.
All of these are mobile, are mobile units. It's not.
Yeah, and what threw me is when it said it can be for use as an accessory building or structure, which has to be permanently fixed, so it's not mobile. So it's kind of contradictory in that sense.
Um, noted. We will discuss. Any other comments?
Sorry, where it says building height, it says C section sixteen dash ten, but that doesn't go to building height, sixteen dash thirteen is height.
Yes, I had that noted as well.
Okay. And then when I looked at that, that definition, it says that it's, you're measuring to the mean. And then for the houses, it says that the height, the height is thirty-five. Is that, is that thirty-five measured to the mean or am I, it is?
Depending on the roof type.
So if I, if you have like a gable roof.
Get me the mean.
Okay, that, that's, that's kind of nice, that's just to make you aware, most villages, it's thirty-five feet to the maximum, like to top bridge.
Correct, yeah.
So.
Yeah, that's, that's in the existing code here, we're not making changes to it.
Okay.
Yeah. We're not proposing.
So a house could go up to maybe forty feet if the mean is at thirty-five.
If the mean is capable, it is.
Oh, thank you.
Scott, at the next meeting, we, did you guys narrow down the definition of fleet? Did we ever come up with?
We will, we're working on it.
Specifically.
I was working on it this morning. But that'll be revised language.
I'm reminded of the, of the nice conversation we had about boats and trailers.
Yes, we're looking at all of it.
And our boats and RVs and I still think we should distinguish between larger power boats and small board boats.
Yeah.
But that probably wouldn't fall under the definitions, it probably just needs to be clarified in that language.
Uh, yeah, we're looking at, either doing it in definitions and the regulations.
Certainly, we could say any boat on a trailer.
Exactly, yeah.
As opposed to a kayak or something.
Just real quick, on your trailer, because I'm looking at it, this is defined, there is a contradiction here because if you're, if you're saying a building and a structure is fixed, but then the rest of that sentence talks about used as a conveyance on streets and highways on its own or motive power. To me, the tractor trailer's on an eighteen wheeler, that's a trailer because it is used as motive, but then we're also talking about like the Zazos or the Uncle Bob's, then we're also talking about the boat. And the only one that we provide it as a different definition for is if it's an RV trailer.
Right.
But everything, so RV, so a typical RV trailer, that one we've got covered, but we define all of the other ones as trailer. So does it make sense to separate those as well?
I think we, we had this sample, we're going to reexamine all of it. Any other items for definitions? Okay. Um, I will.
Scott, take a look at that, do we, under section seven, is that worth a look see?
Uh, we certain.
What the issue is.
Yeah, we filed it away. We did have our planner look at it.
Okay.
It is noted.
All right, thank you.
It's the common, one common receipt prior to the hearing. I'll let the commissioner, the chair take over. We will do, I believe it's continuation vote to the July, a special meeting on July twenty-third, because we have a full agenda for July.
Okay, so we've gotten beyond. Okay, so we've gotten beyond the discussion phase of this.
Sorry, I have, just because, I don't want it to end, I have one more question. On page 17-12, that what is crossed out at the, near the bottom, is open air and tent sales. And I just, I always buy my Christmas tree from that Catholic church on Cass, and I want to make sure that we're not prohibiting them from...
No. So, we have other provisions, not in this code, but in the municipal code for those temporary desk sales, but we also have other code that allows those type of businesses to be conducted as open sales laws.
Making sure.
Yeah, sorry.
That was actually the one ahead of mine.
We need to open up for the public, and then...
Continuation.
There's nobody in the public, though.
Okay.
Would I do this one, or this one?
Okay, we'll reopen the public hearing for PCC 001 through 2025, and Chair would entertain a motion to continue to the meeting on July 23rd at 6:00 PM. Have a motion?
Motion Simpson.
Motion Simpson.
Second, Sharp.
Second, Sharp. Discussion on the continuation. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Donahue?
Yes.
And Chairperson Carmichael?
Yes.
All right. And don't forget our regular meeting on the 9th of July. Next item on tonight's agenda is the open forum. Is there anyone present? I'd like to say something under Chapter 2, Section 2-66 of our Code of Ordinance, seeing none. Moving to miscellaneous, again, next regular meeting will be on the 9th of July, special meeting July 23rd, and a special mention that, I believe it's in October, is it not, Scott, the American Planning Association State Conference, it'll be in Chicago.
Yes.
And it's, it's well worth, what I've done a number of times, and I intend to go again this October, so I would really encourage anyone who has not been to it, we can go as a group, and village, pay our tuition, and we'll get a free lunch, so...
Yeah, I'll mention for that, the planning commissioner training is on October 9th this year, it's a half-day training.
Okay.
That's a Thursday, if you care, and we'll be sending out more information on it as we get more information from them.
All right. Anyone have anything else before I call for a motion to adjourn?
I just appreciate everyone's public service in doing this, coming to special meetings that go till 10, 12 at night, for, I know you do it all for the money, but I'm sure that...
You mean, you're getting paid for this?
Well, but, it's a lot of work, and it makes your job easier when you guys have actually done your homework and reviewed this stuff and have good comments, so...
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, Sharp.
Second, Simpson.
Motion, Sharp, second, Simpson. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.